Madam Jones, on the first application, since it's not clear that he will make it in, because we're starting the meeting now. So seated on this, on the first application will be Jones and for Levy and Jenkins for McRae. And before we start, I'd like to announce that we have, well, wait, good afternoon. Got it. Okay, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission hearing being held virtually on Tuesday, October 29th, 2024. This afternoon, we have some postponements. The first one is, the first two are applications number four and five, JH Builders LLC for a zoning map amendment affecting 49 Sherwood Place. And then number five is JH Builders LLC for final site plan and special permit, also at 49 Sherwood Place. We then have also postponed Nightingale Veterinary Partners at 100 Putnam Green, AKA 5 Western Junior Highway, and that is for a veterinary hospital facility. And we have postponed applications nine and 10, which are for the Old Greenwich Village District Committee for a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment. This evening, ah, Jones, you're off the hook. We will be, Mr. McRae will be recused from our first application, and Ms. Jenkins will be seated for him. Also, before we start, as you will see in the paper, we finally have obtained, thanks to Patrick's incredible hard work, along with Bianca and Jackie and also Dan Clark and people from lots of other departments, we have finally obtained our encroachment permit for the Greenscape Committee to start planting trees on the post road. The inaugurating event will be on Friday, November 1st, at 11:30 a.m., and it will be at 600 East Putnam, which is the site previously of Mike's Organic. We're hoping everybody can join us for that, because we're very excited. We worked on this for six years to get to where we are today. And with that, have I addressed everything that we needed to talk to beforehand? At the end of the meeting, I will ask that we add an item to the agenda, which is that our town planner would like to add a meeting in November. And I'm just, we're going to quickly fill you in on the fact that that's being scheduled and the reasons for it, just to discuss it with you, but we'll do that at the end. So with that, we begin with the first item, which is Berkeley Insurance Company for a final coastal site plan for proposed demolition of the existing structures and construction of a three-story office building across five lots that will be combined. The total lot area is 45,659 square feet. This application is at Davenport Avenue and Steamboat Road in the GB zone.
Madam Chair, I'm recused on this?
Yes, we had announced that already, but thank you for reminding us. Mr. McRae has a business conflict, and Ms. Jenkins will be seated for Mr. McRae. Mr. Higney, if you would kindly begin.
But thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, for the record, Tom Higney, on behalf of the applicant. As the Chair indicated, this is five parcels that are surrounded on three sides by roads, two sides by Davenport Avenue, and one side by Steamboat Road on the west. Pat, perhaps we could bring up the presentation material. I wanted to walk everyone through what we have as part of the project. If we can go to slide two, please. So this property is located in the GB or general business zone. As you can see, I have Davenport on the top of the page, which is on the east side, Davenport also on the north side on the left, and then Steamboat Road on the west. To the south is a condominium project that was built not too long ago on the site of the former Monero's Restaurant. So the property is made, it's, the parcel is made up of three, five properties. One on the corner of Davenport, in the upper left-hand corner, which is a residence, which is approximately 20, 20, 2063 square feet. Then to the right of that is another small parcel, which has a office on the first floor and an apartment on the second floor. It's 2,200 square feet. To the right of that, also going along Davenport, we have the offices and warehouse of Connecticut Iron Works. This is part of the Morgenott family for many, many years, and that's a building of 8,300 square feet. And then going along on Steamboat Road, we have the property at 537, which is an office building, which is approximately 23,000 square feet. And to the south of that, or on the right, is a parcel that has another office building that's approximately 5,700 square feet. None of these properties conform to floor area, lot coverage, building coverage, or setbacks required in the zone. The properties, the buildings along Davenport are either on the property line or a foot off the property line. The one at 545 is on the property line with the condominiums to the south. The building at 537 is actually seven and a half feet from the property line with a large garage structure on the northwest corner. And the required setbacks, front and rear, or front and front is the cases here with Steamboat Road and Davenport on opposite sides, would be 50 feet. And on the Davenport Avenue north side, it would be 10 feet as a street side in a commercial zone. So what we've been putting together and what we discussed with our former zoning enforcement officer, Jody Kuchar, is how can you redevelop this property and take advantage of all of these nonconformities that currently exist? You also have a building at 537 that is four stories and is more than the 40 feet, it's 44 and a half feet that's permitted in the zone. And we sat down with Jody and essentially did a sketch of what you have before you, which is an L-shaped building that fronts on Steamboat Road, takes advantage of the topography, because Davenport Avenue is, as everyone I'm sure is aware, is rather steep, rising up to the portion that is on the east side of the property, and provide underground garage for the, for this. The analysis we went through with Jody was, here are nonconformities that we are looking to combine as part of the reconstruction of the property. And we did this through Section 8-2D4 of the Connecticut General Statutes, which is regulation that was amended about seven years ago, that allows for property owners to reconstruct properties using the existing nonconformities without having to meet the current zoning regulations. This has had a bit of an impact on the activity at the zoning board of appeals, because now you don't have to, you can tear a building down, reconstruct it without the need for applying for variances of various nonconformities that currently exist on the site. And that was quite a bit of what the Board of Appeals had to deal with in the past. So if we can go to the next slide, please. So what we have here is the L-shaped building, which is along Steamboat Road, and then the shorter end of it going toward Davenport. It's three stories. It's 44 feet versus the 44 and a half feet that the current building at 537 has. It provides greater parking. There's 81 spaces currently on the site. This would provide 116 plus six handicap spaces. Could probably take one of the handicap spaces and make it a regular space, since we only need five handicap spaces. I did listen to the briefing yesterday and had an opportunity to meet with Pat this morning and go over how the Commission would like to have the, these nonconformities more fully analyzed, so that you can have a comparison of what is existing and what is proposed. I have a good understanding of that now, and we'll be revising that for your review at a future meeting. One of the other things that comes out of, on this zoning location survey, the flood zone does encroach onto this property and into where the building is located. It's the AE11 flood zone. The, the first, the garage level of the building is at elevation 12.7. So it's more than a foot higher than the base flood elevation. So we don't have an issue with the location of the flood zone.
If I just may quickly interrupt you, Mr. Higney, I'm sorry. Just for the record, Section 82D of the state statutes reads that zoning regulations shall not prohibit the continuance of a nonconforming use, building, or structure existing at the time of the adoption of such regulations. The point, the point here being, it's a continuation within, and we will talk about that later, but it's just, from all, all I know, we're not really talking about an 82D question here in, in your application. Okay, go ahead.
Well, just to follow up on that point, Madam Chair, having dealt with a number of these over the last several years with the prior zoning enforcement officer, this is very much the approach we took on the analysis. You didn't have to rebuild the same structure with the nonconformities. You can rebuild it as long as it does not exceed the nonconformities.
I think what we need to discuss is if you're rebuilding in the existing footprint, and you're putting back a structure in place. Otherwise, I think you heard us discussing yesterday that you go into an expansion of a nonconformity, which is not as this, this statutory change was meant to do. It was meant to, is meant to protect the continuation rather than the expansion of. But we can talk about that after you finish. Because we're going to go, this is a significant topic, and Mary Jenkins has her hand up. So Madam Jenkins, so your call, Mr. Higney, we can discuss the expansion of nonconformities and go down that path for a while, or we can let you finish, and then we'll come back to it.
So I was just going to mention that there are some outstanding drainage comments that we need to address, traffic.
We're aware that you have outstanding issues, but we think, can you hear me? So we are aware that you have several outstanding issues, but we think it's right, that, definitely agree with you for being before us now, because the question of the actual site plan is, as Mary was putting it in the briefing session yesterday, the gateway. You've got to get through that gate first, of does this site plan work with our regulations, and is it consistent with the intent of the state statutes? So we know you have outstanding issues, but I think it's good that you're in here to discuss the overall site plan. Go ahead and finish, as you will, and then we'll talk.
Well, I did want to go over this particular section of the state statute, because what we are looking to do is not increase any of the nonconformities, but to actually decrease them, both setbacks, floor area height stories. And with all of these properties being over what's permitted in the zone and coverage, and building coverage, overall site coverage, and being very close to the property lines, we are coming in with a building that is more conforming than what exists.
Yeah, I'm going to let Mary go on that one. I think from what I heard, Mary, you're probably going to say something similar to what I have in my head. So do you want to hear from Ms. Jenkins at this point, or do you want to finish your presentation?
No, no, that's, that's fine. I, I did want to have this dialogue with the Commission.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Higney. The, I understand your reading of the state statute, and what that does is it basically says, you can't presume the intent to abandon nonconformity simply because you knock a building down. But it's my understanding from the case law that I've been able to find, that the intent is to maintain and continue the existing nonconformity. So you have a piece of property, it has a nonconforming building in nine, nine ways to Sunday, you knock it down, and you can recreate it, you can restore it, you can replace it to exactly the same dimension of nonconformity as the original building. They don't want people to have blight, because a building doesn't conform. But, but the issue is, once you've demolished, what is your intent? And I think my concern particularly is, you're demolishing five buildings, and you're not recreating any of them. You are not using, reusing, readapting that same nonconformity on any part of this, these, these parcels, or this, this merged parcel. So it seems to me that the problem I have is that your project is an expression of the intent to abandon the existing nonconformities, because you're not building two residences on the Davenport corner, you're not putting up another iron works office and warehouse. So again, if you were, you could, you could recreate it and continue. But I think that just, just raising it alone would not be abandonment, but you're not recreating and reestablishing the same benefits of nonconformity. And, and in a sense, you're recycling them, because you're taking things that don't exist in one portion of the, of the property, and moving it and using it somewhere else. And I think particularly, there have been cases which basically said, and I think the main case is Petrucci, which, which basically says, this is something which adheres to the land, and it adheres to the land because it's location-specific. And attempts to kind of add, add a new piece of property and move a nonconforming building onto the new property has been refused in the past. And so, again, I'm, I understand you're saying, oh, we're knocking down the buildings, that's not abandonment, but you're not replacing any of them, you are not recreating any of the existing nonconformities. So I see the raising of the buildings and the nonrestoration as being the abandonment of the existing nonconformities. And I think if you can recycle a nonconformity in the way that you're proposing to do it, nonconformities can never be cured, because they're valuable, and they'll be used in different ways in the future. So again, Mr. Higney, if there's, if there is case substantiation for consolidating, or reusing, or relocating a nonconformity, I simply wasn't able to find it, which is why during the briefing yesterday, I called it a gating issue, because this project represents for me the intent to abandon the existing nonconformity on this parcel.
So the fact that an existing structure, a group of structures, may have certain characteristics that are dimensionally nonconforming, doesn't mean that they can be raised and replaced with new nonconforming structures that are larger or occupy different spaces on the lot. And a merger would not in any way expand, enhance the, a landowner's ability to expand or relocate the nonconforming structures or uses. Such expansions would be controlled by the building zone regulations. That's our, that's, so that's our take on it. I don't know how you'd like to do that. Maybe if you would like to find case law that differs from what apparently we've been looking up, happy to have, happy to have a brief from you.
I'll be happy to provide that to you, Madam Chair.
The easiest thing I would suggest is that you consider not expanding, and this issue of taking a nonconformity from one building that you are raising, and then applying it to a new future structure that occupies a different footprint, is what we would have issue with. So the, that would be, so it's your call, how you, how you want to go about it, but that's our read of, of the case law at this point.
When I've looked at cases that involve this particular section of the statutes, I'm, I'm not finding the, the same conclusion that, that you are reaching, and.
Because, if I might, because I think you are taking, I think you're taking the statute a little differently than we are from starters. Your lawfully established nonconforming uses are protected by the statute. And when a structure violates a setbacks regulation, the owner is in fact entitled to maintain the nonconforming structure in its present location. But in this case, that's not what you're doing. So what you're addressing from the statute is, in my mind at this point, and again, feel free to persuade, because that's why we're here, is not applicable to this proposal that you have before us, because you are, you are creating a different building, and you are taking the nonconformities from different structures within the current site and expanding them. I also believe that although Mr. Couture may have opined, you did not have a formal application at that time, nor was it this application. And that, in the end, it is only the Commission that is the interpreter of the regulations. So I think that since you didn't have a specific application at that time before us, since he was opining as an advisory issue, I think at the end of the day, it would be our call as to the interpretation of the regs. But this is a fascinating topic, and we're very open to, go ahead, tell us. So I think you're looking at the case law in terms of content, of continuing, where in fact, you're expanding into a completely different structure that occupies a new footprint. That's our different point. That's our point of difference.
So when I look at the totality of the nonconforming floor areas on here, I come, I have 41,379 square feet, where something around 20,000 would be permitted. Those are not being abandoned, there's no intent to abandon it. This is, this is a nonconformity that exists on these properties, and that we would combine into one. And I don't see how the statute doesn't apply to that.
Hold on, Mr. Higney, because right there, I saw Mary start to answer you. Combined into what? Go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, and again, by combining it, you're basically saying that you are not remaining within the footprint or within the uses. So when you combine it and move around, move it around and relocate it, I mean, to me, my first reaction is, yippee, we just, we just eliminated five nonconformities, because the buildings are gone, and we're not going to use them again. We're not going to put residences in the corner, we're not going to put, you know, the, we're not going to use the continuing nonconformity that's protected by the law. And if you're not going to use it, you know, use it or lose it, you've raised the building, you're not going to use it again, the nonconformity at that point, it seems to me, ceases to exist. We're not protecting it anymore. There's nothing left to protect. So again, if it could be combined, again, if you're going to recycle it and relocate it and combine it, basically, nonconformities would never be cured. And I just, it seems to me, again, there's a 2014 case, Coppola v Fairfield, which basically says, no, you can't take a building down, get some new land, and, and try to take the nonconforming building to your new piece of land. So if the, if the, if the decision is that you raise a building and try to move it, try to move that right somewhere else, the right exists in the land as it was used legally at the time that it was built. And once, that you're protected, you're, you're, you're protected from being claimed as illegal, you're not protected forever for a right that other people don't have using the land for the first time. So again, it just seems to me, you're saying, oh, I can either cure, I can either cure them and make them go away completely, or I can reuse them. And I just, Mr. Higney, with all due respect, I simply don't see the case law supporting the proposed combination reuse and relocation of a nonconformity.
There, there's, there's one distinction I did want to make, and that's between the structures and the use, because the use in the GB zone, there are many permitted uses in the GB zone. One is, one is office. And we're retaining the square footage, which is what is the nonconformity. We're not intending to abandon that nonconformity by combining them together. We're retaining that nonconformity as we develop the property now with what we're proposing. So it's, it's not, there's no abandonment of it, because our intent is to retain what is the nonconformity, which is the floor area.
In, in, in the format in which it is protected as a nonconformity now, once it's not in that same footprint, it seems to me, you're, you are abandoning it, because, you know, if you're going to, then it would, it would survive almost anything. Again, the theory has to be, what you're protecting is a particular structure that does not conform, but was legal at the time that it was built. So that's protected. It's not, it's not, it's not an entitlement, it's a protection from government oversight. And the, the idea, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Higney, but I just, I don't, it seems to me, if it was that attractive, since the change in the state law, to combine nonconformities, we would have seen it before. And I just don't see anything either in the case law, or even in, you know, law review articles, that suggests that, oh yeah, you know, you can, you can use this land a lot better, so combine the existing nonconformities and move them over to the other side. It's so appealing, and it's so, it's such a good use of real estate, but it's not what nonconformity is about. Again, if you can find anything to support the combination, not the reload, and relocation of nonconformities, I was not able to find anything. And I'm certainly willing to be convinced.
Mary cited, Mary cited Petrucci, and Petrucci, granted, it's an old case, but it, it makes the same point Mary just made, that each nonconformity has a separate legal identity. So it's separate right to preservation, and it would not apply then to broader structures. And when you shift from one location to another, there's some cases on actually residential uses that are of potential, that are also informative. Mr. Low, you did try to raise your hand, and we were doing the, and you know, the seminar is coming up, so we'll be, we'll be armed and ready to go in the spring again.
We don't have to go now, Mary's just given us that, and Tom has responded, it's great.
So, yeah, but we still have the book from, from 2023. All the cases are in the 2023. All the cases are in the twenty-three book, in the twenty twenty-three book. And of course, you know, we might have had some help along the way from others. So.
I, I had a question about, and I don't want to, didn't want to belabor it. That's why I lowered my hand, but now you brought it up, so unfortunately. Have we established that the, the nonconformity is, may continue provided its use is not abandoned? But at least in several instances, with this, with this property, the use, it seems to me, has been abandoned. Has it not?
Well, it's office use. It would go to office use. So the argument is really the use itself is legitimate because it's the GBO. Now, but the question is really about the structural nonconformities and whether you can expand a nonconformity you have at one location to a broader, yeah, all of that. Mr. Hegney, there was also something I didn't understand. If you could just clarify, changing topics for you. The parking, you said it was underground and, and yet, as I remember, there's something, I'm just going back to the staff report. There's something about the zone that makes that a little. Pat, Patrick, what's the restriction in the zone as to the, the location of the parking?
Sure. So parking in, surface parking has to be, it can only be in a certain percentage of the total and within the front yard setback or the street fronting setback. I, I believe this property, the lowest level of parking along Steamboat would be, as designed, would be considered to be underground and therefore would meet it, except for there is conditions about screening in, in those regulations. So if, if the commission thought that the below grade parking was screened adequately, then that location would be okay. It's the parking that comes up as, it's Davenport on two sides, but on the north and the east side that it would have to be confirmed to be compliant with the regulations. Or continuing the nonconforming conditions if there are any that exist.
And am I correct in reading your staff report that the regulations would require two hundred and three spaces where a hundred and twenty-two are being provided?
I thought, is it more than that, Mr. Hegney? I thought it was a little more than a hundred twenty-two. No?
Well, it's one sixteen plus six.
Hundred and sixteen plus the six. Okay. But I'm, I'm not computing it based on one space for a hundred and fifty square feet usable. I'm doing it based on two hundred square feet usable.
Yeah, and, and that, that is another area of, of the, the project that's unique is that a two A office use, which is in the GB zone, limited to ten thousand gross square feet, is permitted. The applicant here is proposing a forty thousand square foot office use with the continuation. And, and again, Mr. Hegney, I don't know if you said it on the record, but your current office square footage, I know your total has been, is in the report and the analysis, it's about forty-three thousand square feet, I think is the number around there.
We're, we're at forty-one thousand square feet. And you did ask me that today. Office is approximately thirty-eight thousand square feet.
Right. So, and the forty-one is the proposed?
The structure, the limit is the structure.
Okay. Yeah, and so that, that is another area of discussion where Mr. Hegney is obviously using the, the two C square footage to parking count, which is one to two hundred of usable. Staff, we did it at the two A, which they're permitted to use, so it's one to one fifty. So it, it is, it is a variation. I, I think it reduces the number by five spaces or something like that over the, the breadth of the whole project. But that, that is why it's different in the staff report than what Mr. Hegney was stating.
Do you want to go to the forty, to the square foot limitation issue? And why you think that you require less parking?
Are you talking to the applicant, Madam Chair? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was talking to the applicant.
Sorry.
Mr. Hegney. Sorry, Mr. Hegney, do you want to discuss that?
What, one of the other nonconformities is that there's only eighty-one parking spaces and one handicap on site currently. So that's another area where we are making it more conforming as, as we are with coverage and height and stories and, and overall site coverage. All of them become more conforming than the regulations than what currently exists.
And then again, the question is, can you take the total group of nonconformities for parking on the site? And sum them and then say, oh, it is now less nonconforming in total. I haven't looked for that. Mary, I don't know. Have you looked for that? Okay, so that's the next question. I don't recall having seen anything on that subject, but I think it goes back to some of the cases that we've referenced, which is again, can you transfer the nonconformity of one site to another site? I think you're coming back right to the same thing. So the fact that one of these lots is nonconforming for parking and not another, you know where I'm headed is, boy, Mr. Hegney, would I love to see that table that Patrick did that has those, those big blank spaces in it in his staff report. I'm sure you have a copy. I would love to see you fill that out.
I, I, that was one of my. Yes, that was one of the things that we discussed this morning.
Good, great, because that was very, that would be very helpful. And then if you add to the table, it, it, it doesn't have parking. So I would add to that table, what would the parking be required for each of those sites? And what you are thinking it then, oh yeah, it does, but no, it does it in total. So then the question would be, and you also haven't given us the split between residential and residential and commercial or office.
There's another, another part of our topic this morning.
Okay, so all that stuff, it would really help us because at least we would see exactly where you're coming from and see it in a numerical format. Patrick, did you want to add something?
I did, Madam Chair. I'll just also point, you know, we're, we're talking about case law, which does have a strong point in this discussion, but also six one forty-one of the regulations is also what needs to be looked at when it comes to changes of nonconforming uses. And I just bring that up because parking in one forty-one B to A talks about, as, as one of the measurables regarding the increase or considering the increase of a degree nonconforming. So if a hypothetically, if a use was proposed that was going to increase parking required, that could be considered to be an expansion and.
Then it's, it's a greater nonconformity, but here again, you have the issue. Before you do that, he's got nonconformity on the lots, parking nonconformity by lot. Would he be able to sum those nonconformities as he wishes to and look at the aggregate and say he's less nonconforming than that? That comes back to the basic point we're arguing, that it's not clear from what we've learned or what I've learned, I should say, it's not clear. Mary, it sounds like what you've learned too. So it's not clear to us that he can do that. So that's again, it comes back to, and that's why I wanted to ask you about the parking, because I think that makes you, puts you back in the same question, Mr. Hegney.
And I'll address that as also, as part of providing the rest of the information.
And we're going to continue to explore this ourselves legally. The, the case law. There are, there's, I know there's two that I haven't read because I'm very slow at reading cases, unlike some people on this commission. So there's a couple I want to look at on, on what ha, and whether there's any possibility of transferring. You, you, you could argue. I mean, I don't think you can go there because the merger isn't eliminating your nonconformities. So I don't think you can, I don't think you're arguing that. Okay, what else, Mr. Hegney?
That's all I wanted to go over with you today. And knowing what Pat's looking for, we can put that together. And then we'll have a brief for you on, on this issue of the nonconformities.
There are no hands up in that commission, so I'm figuring we. Does anybody else want to add anything? I have a couple of other. So one, so you're, you're going to work on those issues and that would be primary. We discussed, you know, we had a joint workshop with ARC last week and we discussed to them if it made sense when an applicant goes to ARC for architectural input, when there's a gateway issue like this. Because, so feel free to comment to Patrick if it would have been better, which we were leaning to think, it would be better to address all the zoning issues first and get those resolved before you go to ARC. But then you could get too late in the ARC, too late in the process. This happened recently with one of the schools. And then there's not enough time for input. So.
I, I, I had thought about that, Madam Chair, and we did have a pre-application with the commission.
We did.
And we did have those discussions and we were prepared to proceed and that's why we went to ARC.
Yeah, at the time, I, I know that I said to you, I had a, I had a concern about the, about how you were doing the nonconformity. So.
Yes.
And I think, I believe that somebody else on the commission might have said that too. But, okay, so let's go to public comment. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this application at Burke, for Berkeley? Please raise your virtual hand. We did get a whole bunch of emails. And the first person is Betsy Williams. Would you all raise your hands so I know roughly how many people and whether we need to, whether we should have it timed? Okay, only Betsy Williams has raised her hand, so go ahead, ma'am.
Well, Betsy Williams is my wife. I'm Michael Cremer and I own twenty-three, twenty-five Davenport Avenue.
And your last name, sir?
Cremer, C R E A M E R. I own the two buildings that are across the street. My concern is that they're going to build this enormous building on the Davenport Avenue side and it's going to tower over my building, my house. So I'm going to have all this light just ruining my quality of life. I mean, that's just my first concern.
Okay.
Where their air conditioning is in the building, where it's on the Davenport Avenue side, not the Steamboat Road. And I don't understand why they're shrinking the Davenport Avenue, the Steamboat Road building to, to two, three stories versus four. We have a hotel across the street that's four stories. I mean, why are you pushing it back to the residential side? It confuses me. And parking is an issue on Davenport Avenue already.
Yeah, I, I, we all know that. We know that it's a parking issue down there.
We've been trying to deal with it for more than two years and it's very difficult.
Yeah, and, and.
Just the beginning of my concerns.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
No, those are just the beginning. I mean, the, the plans have changed a lot since I first saw them. The planting is, is not even adequate, the screening that they put in. They're deciduous trees. I mean, what are they going to do for me in the winter?
Okay.
I, that's just the start, but I'd love, love to hear what's going on. Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Cremer, what we're really focusing on is how big a building can they really do there under the regulations? That's really where, and this, I know it sounds like gobbledygook when we're talking, but, or at least it's zonies. But that's basically what we're, we're saying is what can you really build and how are you interpreting the laws and the regulations? Because we're not so clear that you can build as much as you're building. But Mr. Hegney has a right to convince us, or try anyway.
Okay.
And so he's going to come back and try and do that and work on establishing how, how he can do a building that size. The next step would be how he's laying out the different street phase.
Okay, so this is a question for further down the road then.
Oh yeah, he's going to be back. We don't know when because we have a pretty bad November, but he's going to be back.
Well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cremer. Our next speaker is John Tessie. Mr. Tessie, if you would go ahead, should we limit you to three minutes? Or are you an attorney representing a client?
Where am I?
You're here. Oh, you can't see yourself. I'm sorry. I just enabled you to talk. Sorry, I just enabled you to talk because it was faster. Are you, are you representing?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Um, I'm trying to, yeah, go ahead. There, you're good now. He wanted to be visible.
Yeah.
Hello.
Well, I, I was in the middle of getting dressed for my hearing later on, but I don't have my tie on yet, but I'll have it on later. I just wanted to state as many, I know many members of the commission know, but I, I represent the Delamar that is obviously across the street. And I wanted to speak on behalf of my client in that regard in support of the application. We think Berkeley Corp. has been a very good citizen in a number of ways in Greenwich and specifically as a neighbor to the Delamar. They, they've been basically as, as good as it gets when it, when it comes to understanding our operations. And I think it's a matter of working out a, a logical solution here. I, I would say at the end of the day, combination of the commission, the applicant and the ARC will be able to arrive at a building that everybody's comfortable with. I certainly do believe the FAR is, is located on that overall site. And I think one way or the other, there's enough law here and there's enough uniqueness here for the commission to feel comfortable moving forward with, with Tom and the Berkeley family in coming up with a rehabilitation of that section of Steamboat Road that in our view is very much needed and should be very well welcomed.
Two questions for you, Mr. Hegney. First question is, my impression is that the Delamar creates a lot of parking tension in that neighborhood because you are often underparked for the events you are having. And so one of the reasons that we're expressing concern about this building potentially being underparked is it aggravates the situation in the neighborhood and thus would impact your client. No, don't answer me, just mention it to your client. The second thing is, on the architecture, we had specifically asked Mr. Hegney if he would do something that complemented the Delamar. When he went to ARC, that is, I guess, not what got presented. Nothing that picks up the element, the architectural elements of the Delamar. And again, if your client has a position on that, we'd be interested in hearing about it at the next meeting.
No, you know, thank, thank you. We try to be objective in all regards, knowing that Berkeley wants to accomplish a certain goal. That's why I was careful in saying that. I would be diplomatic and, and have the commission, the ARC and Mr. Hegney and Berkeley.
Well, we all want to get to a good answer that's good for the town.
I did, I do want to say that interestingly, when it comes to parking, as we all know with experience with our office buildings, just by the nature of society itself, our parking lots and our office buildings are not getting filled up at all. And that's something I'll just, can, they can handle with their, with their traffic and their parking expert. It's just complimentary. I also look at an office building as complimentary to our uses.
Yes.
May, I mean, may not be something down the road if, if need be. But pretty much we've been able to control things and I think we've been overall good neighbor. I'll, I'll leave you at that.
And on the other hand, I, I remind you that now people are starting to mandate five days in the office, so it's going to change.
I'm sorry, mandate what? I apologize.
Five days in the office. So I'm just telling you.
Better socialization for our businesses.
Yeah, but.
More people that'll go out for lunch.
It's going to put a stress on parking. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hegney. I mean, Mr., oh, I did it again, Mr. Tessie, I just.
I didn't wear my Groutel marks.
I know. Remember it next time.
You, you can thank Mr. Hegney too.
Literally, I'll, I'll see, I'll see you later.
Mr. Hegney, last thing was not relevant to your application, but just mentioning it. We continue to receive complaints about the noise from the existing facility that your clients have. And if there's anything your clients could do, we understand they're not going forward with that site plan. If there is anything they could do to address the noise, because it is an ongoing issue. We got one more person.
I, I know my client is aware of that, Madam Chair, and.
It's just hard for us because we hear a lot. Alyssa, if you would go ahead.
Hi, this is Eric Sang. I live at twenty-one Davenport Avenue.
Hello. Yes, we have your email and everybody's seen it.
Okay, and my question is really on the height. Like, the third floor of this proposed building is going to look straight into my home. And I don't feel comfortable with a lot of, you know, office workers staring at my home where they couldn't before. And there's no way you could. they couldn't before. And there's no way you could plant trees high enough to cover the third, the third floor. It's not that I'm doing anything, you know, illegal there, but I really don't feel like I want to see a whole bunch of faces looking at me in the mornings.
Well, especially when you come out of the shower. Um, okay, so Mr. Hegney took a note of that and, uh, it's again, the question is, what can the height be? And how could he do the windows so that it, um, the two issues that have come up? The one is to obstruct light of one neighbor and the other is windows that are directly across from yours. Okay. Um, and that's a problem whenever you have residential and commercial uses that abut. So it's something we work on.
Right. And also Davenport is a pretty narrow road. I think it's only twenty-odd feet wide. So being, you know, three stories up, when you look across, you're going to see everything really.
Yeah.
Whether you want to or not.
All right, we'll stop at that. Thank you very much, sir, and thank you for writing us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, uh, Mr. Hegney?
You know, I, I, I just, in, in terms, I wasn't going to bring Mr. Rudberg into it, but, uh, I, I don't think anyone is going to describe the structures that are on this site now as architectural gems.
Um, I don't think that's where we were going. As long as they're being redone, can we address some of these concerns? That's what we're saying.
And, and, um, we think that Rudy has come up with a, a great design. Uh, he's been working on it quite a while. Uh, the, the buildings, particularly on Davenport are, but I, I just want to get into the, some of the things that were raised by, by our neighbors.
But let's do it at the next meeting, if you don't mind, Mr. Hegney, because I think we need to stay, as Mr. Yaski put it yesterday, don't rabbit hole, stay on the, how did you say it, Mr. Yaski?
Um, that, that's a good way of summarizing everything. Yeah, we, we, I don't think we want to go into every little detail until we get over some of these major issues.
I'm saying, so I'm very much.
That's fine. I see Rudy has left us anyway, so.
No, he was, he was left by somebody. Well, okay, Mr. Hegney, so this application will be continued at a later date as soon as you're ready and, um, but feel free to send us any opinion you have, any brief you want to send us or any cases you want to send us anytime.
Be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
See you shortly.
That's what they all say. Um, uh, the next application I forgot to announce has been postponed. That's Bridgeport Roman Catholic Diocese. Uh, and this was for a subdivision, uh, into two parcels of a fifty-one acre parcel. And there were some issues that had come up with it and the application postponed. Next, we have Tesla Inc. For a final site plan for renovating an existing parking lot, including striping, removal of and relocation of the asphalt and some other changes, including landscaping on a four-point-three-six-eight acre property at eighteen-ten East Putnam Avenue in the G B. As a reminder to everybody, only the parking lot is in Greenwich and the, two of the existing accesses. The building is in Stamford. And with that, um, there he is, there she is. Sorry, Ms. Kaufman, uh, whenever you're ready to go.
A good evening, everyone. Thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair. And if we could, Patrick, if we could please, um, also make, uh, Matt Popper present.
Hold on just a second, Nick, will you come back? Okay, thank you.
As well. I'm just inviting our landscape architect as well to join so that we can put up our revised plan. Yeah, my name is Jackie Kaufman. I'm an attorney with Carmody, Torrance, Sandec and Hennessy. I represent, uh, the applicant Tesla Inc., which is the tenant at one oh six Commerce in Stanford, Connecticut. That's in the M G zone where they've, uh, currently cited their new facility. And they are also tenants of parcels two and three, as you just noted, Madam Chair, at eighteen-ten East Putnam Avenue, also known as Zero Latins Rock Road, uh, in Greenwich. And these two pieces have been, uh, connected, as we discussed at our last hearing, since the nineteen, uh, at least the nineteen-sixties. Um, the parking lots are incidental to the, uh, to the use in Stamford. Uh, and we are here tonight asking for a change of use approval for parcel three, which, um, there are two parts of the parking lot. And parcel two has always been associated, has been dates back to nineteen sixty for use there. But we do need to come back to the Commission for approval for use of the parcel three because in nineteen eighty-five and subsequently again in, uh, two thousand and five, uh, it was converted to a bus parking lot depot and you have a condition that asks us at any time that changes to come back to you. So during our last meeting, uh, hi, Matt, how are you? He's here joining us. Um, you, uh, we should, if we can put the plan up, that would be great. Uh, you asked us to meet your regulation, even though the, the parking lot use has been in existence uh, since nineteen sixty and your landscape.
Well, we, we asked you to, we asked you to try hard to.
Yes, and I think we did. I think we did. So we heard you. We previously were presenting to you a, uh, a robust perimeter planting plan. And we had offered six trees, uh, in the, in the parcel three parking lot. Uh, we have now doubled that in size. So we have actually, or we had doubled that in size prior to your briefing yesterday, uh, and provided twelve. And those are central to the center area there. And it was discussed yesterday, could we, uh, could we provide even more? So, uh, Matt is here and he can walk you through these. What we've done is we looked at, uh, at trying to create a connectivity between all of the tree plantings that are located in the center. But, uh, just due to site constraints and the size of the planting beds that, uh, we could provide there, we thought we'd add a thirteenth tree to, uh, to the right. You can see that off to the, the side right there. Um, so we have a nice, uh, full tree there as well. But in summary, we originally were proposing a hundred and nineteen parking spaces to be here. And, um, those meet your size and regulation for civils. And we are now proposing a hundred and twelve spaces. This has resulted in the loss of, uh, of seven total spaces, six spaces in the center, um, to accommodate those additional six extra trees. And then, uh, the additional bay to, uh, you know, bring a little greenery and, uh, bring some symmetry to the other tree that is located at, uh, up to the north to the gate. So, uh, in total, we are providing, uh, I want to just go over that exactly with you. We have, uh, fourteen shade trees, sixteen, um, evergreen, I'm sorry, in the parking lots, we have, uh, fourteen shade trees. These are, uh, large trees, uh, with sixteen red cedars along the street, seventy-one shrubs throughout and another six understory trees, um, also provided throughout. So it's a very robust plan. It meets the requirements of your regulation, exceeds the number that is, uh, required in the parking lot. But interior to the site, there's actually fourteen trees, which we also have one at the, uh, southerly, uh, perimeter of the, uh, of the parking lot as well. So you have a total of fourteen that we'd consider interior to the site and the parking lot. And then the additional evergreen plantings around, um, around the perimeter along Latins Rock. Uh, just to touch on two other questions that were asked yesterday during your briefing, there, uh, will be no through traffic uh, at, at either gate. We've agreed that the northerly gate would be controlled by the fire marshal in whatever manner that, uh, he sees fit to allow for public health and safety standards to, um, and for emergency vehicle access. You did ask if there would be any carriers coming to the site. Very minimally that they would only be as needed, uh, but this is not really a, a site that's receiving a large number of vehicles on a regular basis as it is a, uh, primarily a repair facility. It also has a leasing component. So perhaps at the very, uh, outset, there would be, uh, some deliveries, but they would all come through Stamford. There would be no carrier deliveries, uh, through Latins Rock, no employee and no customer traffic through Latins Rock at all. And that's consistent with an original, um, condition that was put on in nineteen sixty, although the gates will remain in place. I also would like to note that the, not only did we lose the seven space, but originally when, well, we, we made this proposal, we provided you with a metric that demonstrated that there was roughly, you know, five hundred, uh, five hundred plus or minus square feet of impervious surface coverage that was being lost. Now, as a result of the plantings, we've reduced the impervious surface coverage by, uh, roughly twenty-two hundred. It's, it's larger, twenty-six hundred square feet. So that's significant. And also when we look at the regulations with regard to the size of the landscape, landings that's required, that the twelve, uh, twelve now thirteen or fourteen, um, trees that are being provided, this provides roughly twenty-one to twenty-two hundred square feet of landscape area. Your regulations for the twelve parking lot trees by comparison would only require eight hundred and sixty-four square feet. So we've nearly tripled the amount of landscaped areas within the parking lot than your regulations would otherwise require. And so we hope that you think that this effort, uh, meets your expectation.
Ms. Kaufman, uh, Mr. McRae has his hand up. Mr. McRae, go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Kaufman, the, the fourteenth tree. Um, I've got twelve in the islands amongst the parking. Where's the fourteenth?
Oh, Matt, can you put that back up, please?
It is twelve, it is twelve in the islands is what's in the staff report as well.
Like thirteen in the, yeah, thirteen in the.
So this is actually, this is a new plan. This is a new plan that's before you now that was just, uh, prepared after listening to the briefing. So we have thirteen in the center here. And then, Matt, you can point to the fourteenth in the bottom right-hand corner.
Matt Papa, Patrick has it, but it's, it's down, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Matt Papa, it's, uh, down near the southern property line right there.
That's the fourteenth.
And that's an oak.
Okay, and that's, that, that area underneath it right now is, is additional asphalt or is asphalt that you're reclaiming?
That is, yes, actually, we're replanting that. There is a section there. There is some landscaping there currently. But then also there's that section there is asphalt that we are replacing with, with landscaping.
Right, okay, great.
And so I, I have a really, a really ugly picture of it. If you'd like to see it, it's going to be much, much improved.
No, that's all right. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Anything from the rest of the Commission? Um, nope. Okay, does anybody from the public wish to comment on the Tesla application?
I do have one more thing to say.
Wait, you're not in the public.
I know, but whenever done, I just didn't, I didn't want to, uh.
No, go ahead, ma'am.
Uh, the, it, I had, uh, Patrick and I reviewed some conditions because there are several conditions that are on the prior approval that are completely and no longer applicable, including the, uh, the landscape, uh, uh, requirements, because we have now replaced those to be consistent with your regulations. So I, um, I did provide him with, uh, some of my comments as to how those could be amended, uh, for, uh, for your review whenever you are uh, so inclined to.
Oh, this would be if, let's hear from the public and then I would suggest that you run those by us. Why are you laughing?
I'd be happy to talk to them on the record.
Nick is laughing. All right.
Let's talk to the public first.
Okay, so does anybody from the public wish to comment on the Tesla application before Ms. Kaufman cuts them off? All right, does anybody in the public wish to comment on the Tesla application at eighteen-ten East Putnam? No. Okey-dokey, Ms. Kaufman, you're back and talk to us about the conditions.
Uh, thank you very much. Okay, the, uh, the conditions really would be to articulate again the difference between, uh, parcels two and three, that the use of parcel three could be used for automobile parking uses incidental to approved commercial and industrial uses located on one oh six Commerce Road in Stamford, consistent with prior approvals. And that these conditions would replace, rather than supplement, or, or it's just that they, they would completely replace the prior conditions because, and we can go through those if you like, but I know that was a question, um, from, from the last time, uh, that it, it's consistent with all the things we spoke about, nothing, nothing new, but that there are some comments, uh, in conditions that would no longer be applicable, such as the type of plantings at the perimeter or the lack of landscape standards that are here and, uh, and changes of use for, for buses. So if you'd like, I can read them into the record if that's more helpful. They're short.
Um, we sort of don't have a record because we're not in the public.
Oh, that's right. Okay, so the.
I mean.
Ms. Kaufman, Ms. Kaufman, so these are conditions that you want us, you want us to incorporate into a decision if we make one?
I think, yes. Uh, uh, if you do make a decision, I would say that, uh, you, you could consider them. We've spoken about all of them. I just want it to, I would like the approval or the decision, excuse me, to reflect, should you be so inclined, that, that these, whatever conditions you place on this are replacing the prior conditions they would not be additive to. Because some of them are really no longer applicable. For instance, you know, the site plan approval is limited to the parking of forty school buses. Or I think there should be some type of affirmative statement that whatever decision is made or approval is made, that it is made in, uh, to, to replace this prior approval for parcel three bus parking, so that there's no confusion going forward.
Patrick, on what page of our agenda is, of the agenda is the existing decision letter? I am scrolling down.
Uh, I will find that.
Got it, got it, got it, got it. Okay, so. Oh, and even then, we said, where is the original conditions to close up the new, the two driveways? Oh. Well, there you go. So the original condition was to close up the two driveways on Latins Rock. When and if the Greenwich school bus storage ceases, should still continue as a condition. So we would, we, we definitely have that since we're asking you to close that and only use it as an emergency basis, correct?
Yes, we've, we've just, we've definitely reviewed all of the conditions that apply.
You just have to answer one at a time.
Yes.
So that, so to that one remains. So the one to close up the driveways, um, uh, we're going to take out the, the landscaping because we're doing it. Um, so the modifications that that one where the two curb cups were permitted, um, and that those, those two driveways are being removed. All planning and zoning boards of appeals approvals and conditions are to be noted on the plan. I would expect that those carry forward. Is that correct? Nick?
Yes.
All right. Um, no expansion of the parking area is permitted unless it returns to the Commission, obviously.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any change of use must return to the Planning and Zoning Commission. No maintenance or servicing of vehicles is to be permitted on site.
That was specific to the buses, so that's.
No, you could still leave it. I'm still good with leaving that one. You never know when someone's going to decide to have a Tesla repair facility on the parking lot. Okay, that's up, it, you, you might have been specific to the buses, but given the fact that you're now putting a car dealer, a car service place there, I think no maintenance or servicing of vehicles is, um, why don't we say that charging is permitted of vehicles?
I think that maybe it would rather, I, I'd leave it open, but to, I mean, the facility itself is where all the repair occurs, but, uh, I mean, if you wanted to see the charging, sure. I mean, there is no repair outside the facility.
Nick, you got that one? Uh, you never know.
Charging outside?
Yeah, you can charge, but you can't do maintenance or servicing of vehicles on the parking lot.
Kind of, I would think actually the chargers wouldn't be freestanding in the middle of our parking lot, but more attached to the building in Stamford?
No, they would be, they could potentially open it up and run, run the lines and go, put them at the parking spots. You know.
I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about that.
Um, well.
It would seem actually having a, having an electric vehicle in amongst other electric vehicles plugged into a charger.
I, I think we got to get over that, Nick. We're going to have, one day, we're going to have all electric vehicles. We might.
I think actually that if, if, if that's the case, I would actually, uh, in, in the parking lot, we're looking at actually get a, a confirmation of it from the fire marshal, because what I've heard, it doesn't really matter whether we have it or not, if you've got them all together, as long as one goes off.
Okay, you, okay, you said it perfectly. No maintenance or servicing of vehicles is permitted on the site, except, uh, charging may be permitted, subject to approval by the fire marshal. Okay. Um, final plans showing the shed shelter, that's gone, right? All right, so those were the conditions. Now, um, anybody else see? No environmental, site planning, please. Okay. What are the other conditions that you wanted to eliminate? Because I'm not seeing anything else that needs to be eliminated, ma'am.
Oh, well, I was also looking back to the conditions from nineteen eighty-five about the no, I think, I think we've covered, I think we've covered all of it.
Keep.
Oh, we should say that the interior fence is being removed and is no longer required. And that all existing lighting can remain.
Because, ma'am, when we approve your site plan.
Oh, okay. If you don't, we don't need to reiterate it. That's fine then.
Right, okay, that's not a condition. That's an approval of a site plan. So the conditions cited in the February fourth, two thousand and five decision letter regarding this application, which I believe is the most recent. Yes, it is.
Yes.
Continue to carry forward with the exception of the curb cut of the of the driveways, which will be eliminated for normal use now that the bus has discontinued. There was, and everything else gets continued. What else did you want to remove? There are no landscaping conditions in here, except it just says that the evergreen planting is not in place.
No, I think that it's, this was a modification. The two thousand and five was a modification from nineteen eighty-five. I I think that the way that you reviewed them and that we now have
So they are, they build on each other.
Site plan will all be covered. But I would say that let's be mindful of the of the driveways. We don't want to say that those driveways are closed because it's the site plan and landscape.
Driveways are closed for routine use and will only be used for emergency purposes.
Thank you. Perfect. I just, I think that's important language.
I'm sure, I'm sorry, were you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, I I would just point out that the applicant is not seeking service as a use here, so.
Yeah, I know, but it's just it's there, and there's no reason to eliminate that condition. We know that it's that they're not seeking service as a use.
My only point is the commission's decision in the affirmative would preclude another use that would require a a a separate decision, right?
No, no, all we're saying is nobody's gonna come out and fix. You know, the bays are full at the Tesla facility, so somebody starts repairing Teslas in the parking lot. The answer, okay, we're just saying you're not.
Yeah, that that would be a violation of your decision if you approve this.
Right, so it's a condition of approval that you can't totter out and start fixing cars in the parking lot.
Well, I I would just sharpen that point in saying that service would be a separate decision that would have to be permitted. It's not so much that you're.
You can re, you can tweak the words, Nick, you know where we're going, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okey-dokey. All right, anything else, madam?
No, thank you very much.
Does anybody in the commission have any further comments or questions? Does anybody object to closing this application at this time? Okay, this application is hereby closed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We will now take a motion seated on this application are Albin, McRae, Levy, Low and Yesky. And we would be, we would welcome a motion from the secretary.
Eighteen-ten East Putnam Avenue.
Yes.
Application PLPZ twenty twenty-four, three, six, five, final site plan. Application seeking to renovate the existing parking lot to include striping, removal, relocation of asphalt areas, improve parking layout and circulation and landscaping on a four-point-three-six-eight acre property located in the GB zone. Zoning issue comments, ten, ten, twenty-four, indicating new issues with the proposal. And the engineering drainage, the applicant submitted a drainage exemption dated six twenty-seven, twenty-four. Therefore, motion to approve the application noting the following. No additional lighting is permitted without P and Z review and approval. They gab on this submitted a revised landscape plan dated ten twenty-nine, twenty-four, indicating fourteen additional decisionless trees in planting islands located in the middle of the parking area and one to the south of the parking area. The applicant shall coordinate with any pertinent aspects of the project, along with the length of their eastern edge of the Latin rock right of way with the town or tree warden. The existing southern gate and curb cut shall be permanently closed and abandoned in place. The existing northern gate and curb cut shall be reconfigured so as to be available to emergency vehicles. And the applicant shall coordinate with the town of Greenwich Police and Fire Department on the location and specific of a key lock box for any lock mechanism on the northern gate. That would be a Knox box, if you want to go by a name. Charging of vehicles in the storage lot may be allowed, subject to Greenwich Fire Marshal's Office review and location of and procedure. And all remaining applicable conditions of previous PZC or ZVA approvals shall be adhered to. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do you have a second?
Thank you.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Any modifications or comments on the motion is on the floor? Or not on the floor, but in the virtual world. No. Okey-dokey, let's give it a vote then. Ms. Yesky, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and the motion carries five, nothing. Okay. Now we go to the public hearing. Again, we've postponed applications four and five, and we will go straight to application six. Mr. Brazili, can you make sure we hear you? Hi.
Hello, can you hear me?
Okey-dokey.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Our next application is nine Glenville Street for a final site plan and special permit to demolish the existing garage and dwelling on the property and to construct a seventeen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one foot square foot, three-story multifamily residential building with associated parking and other infrastructure. The new building will contain five one-bedroom apartments and eight two-bedroom apartments with two of those apartments designated as moderate income dwelling units. This is at nine Glenville Street. Mr. Hegney, if you would proceed, seated on this application before you start, are Albin, McRae, Wells for Levy, Low and Yesky. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Tom Hegney.
Oh, one more thing before you start, I'm sorry. Mr. Hegney has that, has this as a must-close tonight? I'm guessing we're gonna be asking you for an extension, but let's see how it goes. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hegney. Now you can go.
I apologize. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I always try to take the positive approach. The things will work out sooner rather than later, but yes, there's always a plan B, isn't there? So we were before you back on September fourth as a final site plan application, we brought this to you a couple of years ago with retail on the first floor. That seemed to be something that was not favored by the the neighborhood, and so we revised the plan. Commission said, come back and consider residential on the first floor. So that's why this is an all residential building. Commission amended the regulations to, in certain circumstances, permit residential on the first floor in the LBR two zone. When we were before you in September, you asked us to review this again with HTC. We met with them in September and again at their October meeting. At the September meeting, they said, we want you to establish a street presence for this building. We want you to have access to the sidewalk. We want you to have a front door, and we want it. We we want you to include that as part of this plan. So we made those changes and brought it back to them in October. The only comment they had in October or that a couple, one is to have bollards, which frankly, I hadn't seen on the plan, which were already there along the westerly sidewalk way. And to make the lintel on the new front door facing Glenville Street a little bit more prominent. We we also tried out the both the number nine and spelling it out is with letters. They seem to like the letters more than the number. But overall, they were very pleased with what we had brought in. The other thing that the commission asked us to do was to look at reducing the parking and to reduce overall impervious surface and and less rock removal. So that the plan that we submitted to you is both the engineering and landscape reduce the parking by seven spaces. One was because we needed to make up for the room that we were losing with the entry to to Glenville Street. So we included that. We eliminated one of the parking spaces under the building or not underneath the overhang of the building, not under the building. Yeah, overhang of the building. And we took six spaces out on the the north side or in this drawing on the right-hand side. This is the revised landscape plan that has a couple more details on it. It shows the retaining wall on the bottom. This is the same design that was approved as part of the Chico's and and Glenville Shopping Center wall. We have an added detail on the upper right-hand corner showing how we would handle planting trees in the event that it it turns out that there is too much ledge to deal with there. And also, we have added the vine that would crawl up and down the wall. We planted both at the top and bottom according to our landscape architect, Matt Pop, called Virginia Creeper. We had proposed and ARC liked a Boston Ivy over at Shopping Center, but that was frowned upon by the by the conservation staff. So we've gone to a different wall covering, which is the Virginia Creeper. So this this plan here represents removing the seven parking spaces, one under the overhang and six along the right-hand side of the the property here, the north side. And shows the the overall landscaping that we we are proposing for the property. This also allowed us to reduce the wall height, and that was part of your discussion at the briefing yesterday as well. And the only thing I really wanted to add was the commission needs to make a finding that this is an appropriate location for having residential on the first floor in the LBR two zone. Some parts of town that probably would not be appropriate, such as Sound Beach Avenue and Old Greenwich or Mill Street and and Byram. But here for the one point, this has been used as a residential property for many years and only residential. It is at a corner of a street that is a residential street, Angeles Drive. It's not because of where it's located, not particularly conducive to pedestrian traffic. And the properties across the street have been recently converted from residential from commercial to residential. So I, because of those reasons, we believe that this is an appropriate location for the commission to make that finding that that residential is appropriate here. There were a couple of comments from the the fire marshal that we will not have chargers for EV bikes in the in the garage underneath the building. Those will have to be charged elsewhere, even though the, that's where the bike rack is located. The EV chargers for the vehicles will be on the surface meeting the fire marshal's recommendations on being away from the building. And they do, the fire marshal did indicate that there would be access to the the rear of the building through the the parking lot, which has a wide enough lane to bring the truck in.
Mr. Low has his hand up. Mr. Hegney, if you feel like giving a question now?
Certainly.
I I I can let Mr. Hegney.
Well, if you have a question that's relevant, go ahead.
Yeah, I I'm given the the commission's concerns regarding the extensive removal of ledge, perhaps you could provide us with a quantitative measure of the ledge reduction. And and by that, I I would be interested in what percentage reduction of the total ledge originally targeted to be removed.
Mr. DeAndrea did provide me with some cut and fill numbers. And it frankly, it wasn't as much as I thought it would be, and I I think it's partially because since there's going to be a underground garage, there's an awful lot of rock removal that is taking place as a result of that. I think Mr. DeAndrea was planning on joining us this afternoon.
I saw him, Mr. DeAndrea. Yeah, there he is. All righty.
But I, Mr. Hegney, have you from the initial proposal here, have you have you tracked exactly what the nature of that reduction is? Can we quantify it? And when I say reduction, I mean the reduction of the originally planned ledge removal. So how much less ledge are you now proposing to take from the original plan?
Tony, is that something you were able to provide?
Trying to raise my hand. I don't know if I'm being recognized.
Yeah, here you are.
Okay, the there, the reason that Mr. Hegney has pointed out that there's not a significant difference between the original plan that we presented and the current plan is because we had originally proposed that there would be almost a vertical face along the backside of the rock. When we decided to reduce that rock removal in the northwest corner, we decide, I decided to soften it by proposing a grading up of that slope in the corner. As a result, there was more rock to be removed. Aesthetically, we have a much nicer-looking proposal or potential, and some of it's going to be the result of what exactly we see when the rock removal starts. So in the first plan, we had proposed a vertical wall, which some may consider to be unattractive. If it's a beautiful, vertical, sharp face, it could be very attractive. On the other hand, I gave you the option of having or showing what it could be if it were sloped back. And therefore, there's not a significant reduction in the volume of rock from first plan to second plan.
Was, and was that first plan, did that include forty feet of ledge? Was that the right number?
The difference in elevation from the bottom parking lot to the upper may have been that, Mr. Low, but I I I I just wanted to let you know that behind the edge of the of the parking, there was going to be a vertical wall.
I understood that. No, I I appreciate what you just said. And and originally, there was going to be an increase of in excess of fourteen thousand square feet of impervious surface. Has that changed?
I don't have those numbers in front of me. I can refer to another file and get them for you. I I don't have that. The driveway.
I may be wrong. I I thought this was a material concern for all of us. But I'll I'll let others speak.
What we've done is we've taken away the the spaces in the corner, pulled the driveway in, constructed a grass strip and then a retaining wall and sloped it back. So I don't have the the coverage at my fingertips. I can get it for you. The difference in coverage. I did present that. I just don't have it on my table right this minute. I'll have to go to another screen.
My recollection, yeah, if you could get it, Tony, because my recollection is there was about a a seven hundred and fifty square foot reduction in pervious coverage with this.
Is that five percent? I mean, I don't.
It went from roughly seventy-five percent to seventy-one percent of coverage, site coverage.
Do you want me to show the development plan on the screen?
Yes, please. Yes, please. That would be great.
Bianca, the the recent numbers are part of the the presentation material. And sheet four, which is the zoning location survey, does if you blow it up, will show the figures on the right hand side.
While you're doing this, and this, the other question that was part of the concern was there's still, is thirty the number of mature trees scheduled for removal?
I don't think that that changes, Mr. Low. Because we're looking to re-landscape that northern northwest corner of the property. As well as
re-landscape. What do you mean by that? The trees are, they're either they're either coming out or they're not coming out. They're not coming out just for the sole purpose of putting in new landscaping. They're coming out because you have to remove them to create space for the parking, I assume. Is that correct?
No.
It's an attorney's euphemism. They're going to remove what Mr. Low is saying, re-landscape is a euphemism. You're tearing out trees, so you're going to have to replace, you're replacing them. That's all he's saying. It's not really.
Replacing the trees there. That's true.
It's not like, hi, I'm going to re-landscape my backyard. It's, hi, we're building a project here and it's going to involve some tree removal and we're going to replace some of the trees. It's it's not really re-landscaping, but
Yeah, I my basic question remains. Does that, I think it was an original number of thirty. Does that, is that still apply or has that changed or increased, decreased or whatever?
No, that 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 number is, it's, if it's not thirty, it's it's somewhere between twenty and thirty. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Levy, Mr. Macra, you had concerns yesterday. I feel stuck on this because I I like the idea, the concept of having housing diversity of and adding some options for people, but I think we haven't. I don't think we're totally at ease with the execution yet. Mr. Levy, why don't you go ahead? And then Mr. Macra.
Well, I guess I want to start by saying the, there's a, there's a concept here which we think is the direction we'd like to go. But I I think that the program that's presented is still a ten pounds of of potatoes in a five pound bag. We have a lot of things to work through that I think that can be, but I just think that the the project is a little bit too ambitious, aggressive. I mean, just looking at the conservation comments and seeing how the, you know, the it says the previous conservation rule comments dated June fifteen still apply. I mean, so whatever, whatever modifications have taken place, still there these issues still remain. So I think there's still some work to do here. I mean, I can go through them, but I think you can I think you've read them yourself. And I think that this is a great concern, not only to me, but to the people in Glenville. And another issue is the traffic. This is really a discernible problem. Right now, the the traffic is very unwieldy. And one of the things that I I guess I've really come to the conclusion is that two curb cuts is really going in the wrong direction. One curb cut obviously is necessary, but I think the two is is adding fuel to the fire. Especially when you're coming out of the garage up a slope with whatever site issues there may be coming on to the the street, the side street. The bulk of the building is really wildly bulky for the neighborhood. The, the kind of and the this sloping site which has a lot of character is is diluted by a very flat encompassing scheme that that has to cut and not fill the this gently sloping site. So there's a lot of things here that need to be worked on. And I I just think that it's a matter of acknowledging that the site has some limitations and therefore the applicant can can go a long way by reducing the size of this. Then then all of a sudden, we're getting somewhere. But I I think that our, one of our objectives is the P O C D is to preserve the character. And I I think that this is something that can easily be achieved, but maybe not with the application is presented.
Mr. Macra?
So Mr. Hagney, you've got a waiver from D P W for the two curb cuts. H D C gave you an unanimous approval on the ninth on the building itself with some minor revisions. I think you've incorporated those. D P W is okay for zoning permit. You've given us a sewer acknowledgement letter. I guess there's a better revised landscape plan that shows, I guess there's, and I think actually the question I had with the landscape plan that was just revised. It showed planting pockets or something on top. And then Virginia Creeper as a planting on top and bottom that would actually cover up. Yeah, that's it.
Yes.
Cover up with which it looks like a dry stack or not, a lockbox wall that would be canted back. Is that what I'm seeing here?
Yes, yes, that's that's what we presented as part of the Glenville Shopping Center for the Chico's supermarket. Since everyone seemed to like it there, we thought we would bring it here.
Okay. Then we have plantings at the top and the bottom. I think actually it's trying to clarify, you know, top and bottom of wall. So I understand exactly what they are because I saw I was trying to figure that out the other day. I got about sixteen feet as the max height. I did look, bring out the old Z L S. And I guess the the last time we saw the site coverage was at seventeen thousand seven one seven. And we're down to sixteen thousand nine five five. So it's been a reduction. It's not the building as much as the geometry of that wall. Is that correct?
That's true. You you do need to be able to construct the wall. And as Tony was saying, it depends on how the the rock is removed. If it's a hard rock that they can cut as a face, then there would be less wall and there would be more rock face.
Okay, now, the one of the issues we had a question of with is will there be enough soils above the wall in that area to plant what's proposed? And on this plan, it was talking about some kind of a rock ledge or rock
Plan. So what what's in the upper right hand corner on the screen right now is what Matt Pop was proposing as part of creating planting pockets for the trees that are proposed in that upper right hand corner of the
So what what does that mean? Planting pockets for the trees?
That you create a sufficient amount of soil for the trees to be able to grow and flourish.
Okay, so let me, if I understand this, you'll be scraping down the soils, getting to the rock face. And then bringing back in something to actually plant the trees into or on top of the ledge, whatever's left over. And that would be basically from from the top of whatever the existing wall is up or enough to get get enough soils there to actually plant something. That that's how I'm understanding that?
I believe so. Mr. Pop was around before. He may be able to elucidate this better than I can.
Mr. Pop, tell us. Sorry, I thought he was already in on his way. When we're looking at the screenshots. Okay, he's coming in. Nick, what I'm trying to get to, and I think you're headed there, but I just want to say it again is what do we want to see happen with the site plans so that we can get to a solution that works for the applicant and for us relative to satisfying our regulations? Recognizing that the H D C has weighed in favorably, which is important.
Well, let's let's start with, let's start with Glenville Street. So the front facade of the building, in the front yard of the building is actually a result of actually having first floor residential. And it requires from H D C to bring up a front entrance and so the the street facade looks like it's got a front door. All of the landscaping, the patio is kind of in result of that. The building footprint hasn't changed, although the architecture was revised and approved by H D C. The two curb cuts have always been there. There's a waiver from D P W. I think it was the Fire Marshal had an issue of with my understanding, the Fire Marshal had issues with this second curb cut. Is that correct, Mr. Hagney?
In the comment that the staff received last Friday, said a limited access to the roof. But he did point out that there was access into the parking area, given it's the entrance width. And then he had a question on the E V chargers for bikes garage.
So we resolve the E V chargers, but actually can they get it, get an apparatus up into the back parking lot? And close enough to the building to affect any kind of a rescue from the roof? Okay.
Yeah, and that, well, we have a I think it's twenty-four foot wide driveway there. For for two way, for two way traffic.
Looking at it right now, yeah, it's, yeah, twenty-four. You have to the north or, yeah, to the north, you have a planting area into the south. It looks like a wall, but he still has enough room. The grade isn't difficult, so he found an issue there. It's more within than access or getting close enough to the building.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. R, Mr. Wells, just correct me if I'm wrong, I guess, E M A C gave a positive review on the the thing. I think we've just talked about the E V spaces. They'll all be outside, which is a good thing. I don't believe we heard back from Beta on a final. So and I think so basically, yeah. It comes back down now, actually. It's the wall because everything else has kind of been resolved.
That's what you said yesterday, and that's why I was trying to get you to articulate that.
Front of the building, the building curb cuts. You know, there's much, much more landscape. Some of it is 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 part of the front screening. We've got trees in the parking lot. We've got the parking. We've got a refuse area outside, which makes sense. It's the wall, what's planted on top of the wall and the bottom of the wall. Like we did at Chico's, like you said, we were asking, make sure that the face of the wall is acceptable. It looks like you're doing the same thing, which A R C is applying down before. We've got Virginia Creeper top and bottom, so something will be growing on the wall. I think it boils down to actually all of the landscaping that's proposed, which we would really appreciate on top of the wall, behind the wall. Is that actually possible? After scraping down all the soils and removing as much ledge as possible without blasting. I think that's the only open issue we have at the moment. Is that correct? Or is there some, is there more?
Okay. So you're you're asking all of us, like what our issues are.
Anybody and everybody.
Yeah, okay, so the thing that I have the least amount, I did, four people with their hands up. I I take it back. Mary, Levy, Wells and Jones. If you guys don't say it all, then I'll jump in, but I shouldn't have cut in the line. Go ahead.
Yeah, my my comments were it didn't look like all of the housing specialist comments were included in the affordability plan and the declaration of restrictions. So if somebody can just double check that, I think particularly I've noticed that the annual affidavit, I didn't see that included in any of those documents. And my other question is just I'm, I would like to understand why the mid income apartment on the ground floor was reduced from nine hundred and ten square feet to seven hundred and eighty square feet and is the smallest apartment in the building? Since they didn't change the footprint, I didn't really understand why the apartment sizes were changing.
The reason for that, Ms. Jenkins, is that we needed to provide the space for the for the front entry and the corridor linking from the front of the building to the rear. So there was square footage that was lost. And we had that one bedroom unit on the east side of the building. This has been moved, it's now been moved to the south side and it has a patio which it didn't have before. So it has the amenity of the patio in in exchange for less square footage.
Thank you, Mr. Hagney.
And we don't have the will serve letter either for Aquarian. Mr. Levy. And Noel, did your hand come back down? By on purpose, sometimes they just pop. So did you want to have your hand up? Sometimes it just drops down. It's from the way, yes, you want to have it up. Okay. All right, go ahead, Mr. Levy.
Yes, thank you. I did want to mention that the Virginia Creeper is deciduous, so as nice as it may look in full bloom, much of the year, it will be barren. And this is a substantial wall, which is very troubling to me. And I think it's it just reminds me of mining in Virginia, in West Virginia. And I I just think that it's and and trying to create pockets for planting is really unfortunate because, you know, there's only about as much as a foot of soil on top of that ledge. And so you're you're reducing that ledge by quite a bit in order to create pockets for trees. There's not going to be much ledge left. So plus, the the trees are well above you. Maybe they serve purpose of screening the the house next door, but they're not going to have any real significance as far as how they're perceived. Curbside and from street level, they're going to be well above your your view. And so the parking lot is basically unlandscaped. Which I also think is a problem. So as all the rigmarole of of the planting plan that they've devised here is very much compromised by the unusual conditions. Putting in trees on top of a wall, but leaving the, you know, the vast parking landscape quite exposed and unfinished. I don't think that it's going to be I I don't think that it's going to be um a. I I think that the. A little bit more thought should go into how to address these issues because I think that they're. Not very sensitive to the neighborhood. Uh, the. The uh, I would like to understand if there's any. Uh, uh. Um, as as in in the notes, we were given uh the. Uh, Glenville Plan and the plans that they have for doing renovations along the street, uh, if there's any overlap. Uh, with this project as well.
You know, put, I'm sorry, are you were you done?
Yes, thank you.
Putting it another way, if you go to the first page of the conservation comments, and this is kind of, you know, we've been stuck on this all along. The property is on a steep slope thirty one percent with shallow ledge dropping from elevation one seventy three to one thirty six. And the P O C D recognizes slopes over twenty five percent as a valuable natural resources. Removing forty feet of ledge disrupt disrupts us. I think that's what everybody keeps reacting to is what this looks like from the street. Uh, and the amount of that you have to work with a steep slope and what the impact is. Um. I'm gonna let other people talk. I'm just agreeing with Mr. Levy, but from a different perspective. Mr. Levy, you were done, right?
Thank you.
Um, Madam Jones, you are next, and then Mr. Wells.
Thank you. Um, the Aquarian was one of the things I wanted to bring up, but the um. Other question I had, which was something I raised yesterday, and I know this had to do with, I think, some of the responses to the the traffic. Um, concerns that were raised and talking about the signal offsetting. And the process that that would be something that actually the town of Greenwich would have to do, but kind of understanding. The process on that, and then I think what are the implications really looking from King Street to Weaver, because that's where, I mean, there's just there's. At certain times of day, there's a lot of traffic and all of that. And I think the residents of Angeles Drive were concerned. That with the backup, you know, beyond their their ability to get out of Angeles Drive at certain times of day. Um, with that, and that was sort of what was proposed, and I don't know if you, if the applicant has any additional information on that. Um, or if that's just something to be looked into at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Uh, yeah, I just want to build on uh a point that Nick made and then digress a bit from there. And that is, uh, I'd say E Mac was more than positive. They were they were enthusiastic about the steps that uh. This applicant was taking in terms of uh minimizing greenhouse gases. They're putting in a geothermal system. To my knowledge, we've seen this with uh single family residences, but uh to my knowledge, I don't think we've ever seen it with a multifamily home, so. That's that's a big positive in my mind. Does outweigh other things? No, but I I just want to flag that, say, this is much more than positive. This is. Very enthusiastic. Uh, I guess, you know, we've talked a lot about the wall. I I sort of be interested, how much of the wall do you see from Glenville Road? Glenville is much more heavily traveled than uh De Angelis is. So I'd be interested in that. And then uh, we've dealt with walls before. There's a pretty high wall at Central Middle. Uh, they're certainly down at De Chico's a wall. I I'd be interested in the height certainly of the De Chico one. Uh, versus this. Now you could say it's different because I think the cheek much bigger property. And I think the wall is a lot longer than this one, so this is a smaller property, but. Just to get an idea as to the dimensions, but the main thing on the wall is how much do you see it from Glenville? If it's just the people in the parking lot that live there, well, they've they've had the choice whether they want to buy or not. Uh, so that would be my consideration, but we're going to run into ledges all over Greenwich. It's just the way the geology works. And it's really a question of, you know, how much ledge you want to remove versus what is the benefit of removing ledge? In the case of De Chico's and Central Middle, the the answer was yes, it was worth it. To remove a lot of ledge and have, let's say, a relatively high wall in order to achieve the development objectives that we want to achieve. But the question here is 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 does that apply in this case? Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Wells, from what I see with the building, the new building.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
You're really not going to see the wall that much from Glenville because it's actually very close to the liquor store. You're going to see you're going to see it from Angeles. Um, you're going to be looking up at it. Uh, the flat part of the new driveway is at uh one thirty five plus or minus. And the street is down below it, but uh one twenty six, so you're looking. Kind of up into the parking lot and then up onto the wall, but only from Angeles and only when you're actually behind the building uh by a few feet.
So Bianca, can you share the elevations? Um, I I was just I was just looking at the my uh there at the end. And then debt and then we keep the one with the front door in it. Boom, boom, boom. That's not the one that has the full wall and how much you see from the street. You know, actually, in the very first page of the site plans where they have the cute rendering, you can get a sense of how it looks. That is the walls.
That's the wall of the street at Glenville and Angeles, but not the wall in the back.
Right.
Oops.
Let me pull it up. Give me one sec. That was the presentation material.
Dennis.
Yeah, I'm I'm I thought I had this, but I'm a little confused. Or or is everyone objecting to this based on the new landscaping regulations combined with conservation comments? Is that where we're going with this?
You know, it we have struggled with this application.
I I know, yeah.
From day one, because the way it went was, and everybody remembers this. There was so much cut and fill to create the parking and to fit into the spot. So we said. Oh, and then there was the complaint from the neighbors about the street presence. So we said, don't make it mixed use, make it all residential. Neighbors want wanted that, and that'll be less cut and filled because you'll reduce the parking, and we weren't right. Because in fact, the parking for an all resi- that's the one I was thinking. So you see a fair amount of, I mean, how tall is that that wall in the front?
Yeah, I'm I'm just trying to get arms around what it is that from a regulatory standpoint.
From it it's because, you know, where are you bumping up against? There's a bunch of things that we haven't gotten to. Uh, conservation also comments and Mr. Deandrea, I'll ask you in a second on the drainage. Um, but regulatory wise, we're bumping on the removal of this very steep slope, the cut that you're doing. And the building onto the site has a lot of impacts. And we're trying to manage them manage around them. So that we can get an application that makes sense. I have one other regulatory issue to raise, but um about the 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 very small unit. But we're, I think, am I wrong that what everybody's struggling with is because this is a steep slope? You're ending up with a lot of cut. You're ending up on. On the on the on the rock. And then you're ending up having to work with that. And is this the best we can do, given how really actually challenging the site is? I think that's where we are. Is this the best it can be, given how challenging the site is? And um, uh, uh, that's the question. So Dennis, where do you come out?
Well, I thought I was comfortable with it, but having heard everybody, I agree with the comments, but it's the site. So I'm trying to figure out what I'm going to cite in the regulations. To either accept or deny this thing, and it sounds like it's a combination of P O C D, which is kind of vague in some areas.
And we can't really do that. We can't, you know, it's um, it's difficult to do because we took out consistency with the P O C D from the site plan standards. Um.
Uh, so you're the heights of that wall at the front at the low, and this would be on the De Chico's driveway side? Is about four feet, one thirty two to the first floor is one thirty six.
So on that side, it's not bad. And then when you turn the corner.
Far side, okay, it's. Uh, one thirty six and one twenty nine or one twenty eight. So it's, you know, but that's it. But the street, the street slopes, so.
Yes, we know that. The street slopes and the and the lot slopes. And, okay, so Mr. Deandrea.
That's 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 just the walls in the front and actually they're there because the building is there.
Yeah, and go to the side.
And the bus side is basically really not wall. It's building and.
No, but that wall that you see from the side is how big from Angeles?
Uh, top of the wall is one thirty three, the bottom of the wall is twenty one twenty seven.
So that's like ten ten feet?
No.
Oh, uh, one thirty three. So you're saying six feet?
Yeah, so everything's running the heights about six feet along the walls along the street.
Didn't look at the top.
Four to six feet.
Sorry, Mr. Deandrea, you're gonna yell.
And Mr. Deandrea, just plus or minus, I I according to the numbers I got, the high point of the new wall, the new geometry. Um, in the land near the new landscape is about fifteen feet. And then it goes up. I think there's a one point, it's twenty four feet, but I I just, if you have an opportunity to take a look at that, just let me know.
Tony, you're mute muted.
Ge- generally, the walls along the street were kept at the six feet high, which is permitted along the boundary of a parcel. And that's what we were doing along the two streets.
And the wall in the the wall in the back, uh, high point is fifteen feet above the driveway.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, Ms. Mackley. I have to, I keep moving back and forth from different rooms, so I can go get that, give you all the information. Just.
No, before you leave, don't leave yet, because I got a question for you too. Um, so don't don't jump up yet, um, because this one you can answer seated. I I think I know what you're gonna say. In the conservation comments. They say that the stormwater system. Will not fully address, will not fully mitigate the increase in impervious surfaces. And that runoff will be directed into the vi- into the Byram River via the street system. Uh, Mr. Deandrea, I didn't think you did drainage plans like that.
Okay, so um, I I I appreciate the um comment, but it's not necessarily what I would.
Okay, I mean, I didn't think you would agree because I didn't think you would be directing runoff into the street system. Under the drainage manual, you wouldn't be able to do that. So this is just.
Madame Chair, the fact is we are connecting as the overflow into the street system. The street system has a direct route into the Byram River. We're required to treat the effluent, which we have done. We've also um detained the increase in the um uh runoff. Based on our tight joint system and our infiltration through permeable pavement. You notice we have four areas of permeable pavement to treat. The required sixty percent of all the impervious area on the lot. The D P W has agreed that our drainage um report is appropriate and in accordance with the drainage manual. So yes, the ultimate discharge is to the drainage system.
It is. Okay, so a question for you. When she says you're only offsetting this, you're only capturing the sediment and you're not doing any other kind of pollution. Um, filtration.
What she's failing to recognize is that we don't have the ability on this property. Um, to infiltrate due to the nature of the soil, whether or not we construct the building. Yes.
You've got absolutely no way of, okay, so how much, how much, how how much can you retain on site?
All that's necessary.
So you're retaining.
Requirements of the town drainage manual.
Okay.
In this positional particular location in the watershed at the bottom of the of the watershed in the somewhat um factually flood prone Byram River.
Oh, yeah.
Behave us to discharge sooner.
Yeah, I got it.
In advance of the peak.
Well, oh, oh, wait, wait, clarify that for me. It would behoove us. So the Byram River starts to flood. And what you want to do is push the water back towards it faster.
We want to get it out of our area faster. Want to treat it. And and do what's necessary to meet the requirements of the drainage manual applicable and appropriate for this location.
I'm missing that. I'm not understanding what you're saying. So you're saying.
The ideal thing for the Byram River at this lower um location. Would be to make certain that the peak discharge from our property is discharged well in advance of the peak. For the major um Byram River. It takes a lot longer for the water at the at the northern end of the Byram River to reach down to this location. At that point, we have a tremendous amount of water trying to get it into a somewhat restricted area as we pass down by Pembroke Road. Therefore, we want to be able to meet our obligation for the treatment and detention, but make certain that we release it. As soon as possible, if you will, so that we don't combine unnecessarily with the peak that's coming down in the entire watershed. It's just a basic concept.
But you would basically be, I can't think of a good analogy. You're basically sending water to a place that's gonna about to start sending it back to you.
No, that's not it. That's not a good analogy at all. We want to get it out of here before we pile up on top of the rest of the water that's coming down. If you're the first car in the traffic jam, you get by the blockage. When everybody else is catching up to you and trying to enter into the same um exit or entry ramp, you've got a blockage. We want to be the first car out of the parking lot.
That's what my father in law used to call the smarty pants approach, because then you have a hundred smarty pants developments. And everybody's doing the same thing and the water comes at you. Mr. Wells, did you want to make a comment on that?
Uh, not not particularly, but you know, you do have some properties downstream will be doing the same thing. So uh. As uh the chairwoman says, you know, it's sort of a a race. The other, but you do have a question is, you know, what if it rains for five days straight? You know, your peak. The the peak can last longer than you could get it in there. You your peak, if you got an extended peak. You're going to be hitting the the peak from the river. You know, if it rains for five days. You're you're putting it in the peak.
What everybody saw um on the news for multiple days in a row. Um, was when the river has. Exceeded its controls, were flooded. That's not the situation here. We we're on, we're not looking at this um from a standpoint of the river being flooded for five days straight. It may occur, but that's not the basis of the design. In theory, we don't want to have our. Our peak combined with the major peak for the entire river. There's a lag as the water from upstream finally reaches the bottom. But we're doing our job to detain appropriately and discharge. We cannot infiltrate in this particular environment because of the geology of the underlying um site. So it and we're doing all that we're required to do to treat it, filter it.
Yeah.
Pull it, and then the excess.
Yep, we got it.
Allowed is discharged into the street system. That's a fact. There's also a comment made about whether or not the groundwater that we might encounter was in some way going to overtax the the system. We have a large diameter pipe going across the property that is owned by the applicant here. A direct discharge into the Byram River. It's very clean um filtered water, if it does exist. Um, coming through fissures of the rock. And yes, it will be directed into the street system and directly into the Byram River in a very clean um fashion.
Tony, for the uh treatment that you have on the site, there's a unit called Jellyfish. Can you describe that to the?
Yes, sir. Jellyfish is a is a fancy um filter. When we don't have the ability to infiltrate, I mean, we want to make sure that anything that may be carried in the water. Um, in the way of runoff from or um impurities from pavement. Um, we filter it through this manufactured treatment device, M T D, it's called. Um, in general, there are multiple designs. But the town has constantly been recommending that we incorporate the jellyfish, and what it is is more or less a glorified concrete structure. With a variety of filters, analogy being your oil filter, the water passes through um and then then the uh heavy uh materials and. Any waterborne or or um diluted um impurities are filtered out periodically. The filters have to be cleaned and replaced. But we've um just incorporated it at the uh behest of the D P W over on another project that you just reviewed a few hours before. We also incorporated it um to satisfy a requirement of the Wetlands Agency. On another um housing development in Riverside. So. The town has accepted it, recognized it, and in fact, recommended it. Just another layer of purification for the surface water.
Okay, Mr. Deandrea, that's that's that jellyfish is is upstream on the property above the. Street catch basin in which it it um drains into. And then the street catch basin, the street catch basin on the property. Is accepting the untreated drainage of the. is accepting the untreated drainage of the street itself, that goes straight into the Byram River, right?
Yes, sir, our, our attempt is to, to filter the water before it leaves the site, yes.
Okay, and then the, the drainage structures that are proposed underneath the site um, only discharge when they're filled. Everything else is actually to seep into the ground war, into the ground.
No, no, no.
In the storage.
In this particular case, because we have the tight joint pipe, um, detention system. The water's filtered through the permeable pavement, then finds its way through the tight joint pipe and then ultimately out through the jellyfish, so the town of Greenwich Drainage Manual is designed so that you do your water quality first. In an ideal situation on a large tract of land, you may have a rain garden, you filter it in the rain garden. What's left over then is detained or, or, um, well detained in perhaps galleries or another larger rain garden, but the idea is first you filter, then you detain, then you release. So the release is, is throttled through a small orifice, and then once that's throttled out, you can then do the last purification. Sometimes, in a case like this, we can't do a rain garden, so the jellyfish is like at the end of the train instead of at the beginning. So the, the ideal treatment train is roof, pavement, rain garden, detention, discharge. In our case, we had to filter, detain, and then, um, final filter through the jellyfish.
Hmm, okay, so you're detaining, and I think that's the, that's the thing I was getting at. You're detaining a ho- host of, host of the water before, during a rain event, you're detaining.
Detaining is the bathtub is filling up and then we're releasing, that's detention. Rejection would be to keep it on site until, and call that infiltration, but we don't have the, to infiltrate, therefore, we're not retaining.
Great, thank you.
So, um, Dennis, before you go. Um, so we got the drainage, um, let's just go back through outstanding issues. And Patrick, just, uh, let's, people are having trouble still with the steep slopes and the site and whether or not it's gonna look all right and the height of the wall, so we'll just park that. Um, traffic is a concern, but we're hoping that with the CMAG project, et cetera, and given um, we didn't get updated for beta, right?
I don't, I don't see it, Madam Chair, but I don't.
Okay, so we're pending beta now.
We did, we did get it, sorry.
Okay.
There was.
I didn't see it, sorry, the affordability plan is missing some stuff, the S and E plan needs to be updated. We don't have a will serve from Aquarian. Um, uh, uh, we're supposed to ask you if you really need the two refuse areas or one would be okay. I, Mary asked you about the very small size of the moderate income dwelling unit. Again, this is moderate income, this is not affordable per eight thirty G. Uh, but several of us attended a training seminar on affordable housing. The state really wants us to do equity and comparability. And that was the point that Mr. Santoro was making, I don't know if it applies to size. I don't know if this is an issue for how small this apartment is. Um, but I'm just raising it because, uh, Mr. Santoro at the class talked about how he wants to see full integration of the different market prices and how important comparability was, so he mentioned that. And, um, I can't remember who was at the class, um, besides, I think Nick, you were there, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we heard that, uh, you know, you can't always tell who's at a class, um, S and E, um, ask you if you want to bury the, 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 the wires, well, given how rocky it is, you may not want to, but we're asking you, the refuse areas, um, we note that HTC, we've noted it several times. And I, I, those are the open things I'm looking at right now. Uh, relative to our standards, no matter what, I, I know conservation always raises this question about drainage. They are looking for more, but per Mr. DeAndrea's point, absolutely accepted by DPW. And we always say, even though conservation may raise concerns, DPW has their manual and they have complied with the manual. So that's where I am on what's missing, and then the other thing is the, they did reduce the parking demand in total by, I'm blanking, seven spaces or something like that, when they went to all residential for mixed use, so, and, and they've reduced the overall site coverage by like seven hundred square feet. So it has gotten better, and the big question is, if you look at our goals to have more housing diversity, to have this regulation used, are we close enough? Dennis was feeling like we were close enough. If you guys clean up these outstanding issues, the next thing for the commission is, can you get your brains around it? Is there anything else you want to see happen, and to what Dennis keeps saying, relative to our site plan standards to six fifteen and to six, six seventeen? What is missing here that you're looking for? Now, Dennis, go.
Well, you, you said a lot more than I was gonna say, but, uh.
That always happens, Dennis.
Maybe we can push back and ask for an extension.
Yeah, no, but we would do that, that would be fine, but the question is.
The other thing is, can I get in this in?
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
If we're okay with drainage, and I'm reading here, we have to be unless we're experts. Um, the, the, the other site that had the steep slope and landscaping and everything, remember that site on the Mayanus River?
Yes, 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 and we turned it down.
What did we do there? Did, did we, um?
Uh, that was on, oh, I can't remember that address, Mr. Hegney, I don't think that was your application. It was a residential use, Patrick, do you remember it, it was a residence?
Was it two forty-nine valley?
Um, no, it was over by Cary Road and it was, it had a cantilever, something.
And there was a very steep slope and there was landscaping issues, there, there was drainage issues into Mayanus River.
And they revised the application, but here we are, the only, you know, we're giving zoning incentives. That's one of the reasons, I mean, Mr. Levy doesn't like the bulk of the building. But the reason the building is the way it is, is because we're giving a zoning incentive in order to get these two moderate income units. So that we get the housing diversity, so there's, this is, this is always the trade-off. We are gonna get more massing than we necessarily would embrace. But in exchange, we get below-market units, which is what we strive for, so that's where we have to get our brains around, is this as good as this site plan and special permit can get? Other than this list of outstanding issues. Nick and Peter Levy are definitely bothered by those walls, I don't disagree with them. But I don't know how else someone could work with a site, I don't know enough about site design in this case.
I think the walls have gotten a lot better, um, ten, ten Westview Place was the, uh, the one on the hill.
Yeah.
Okay.
Westview.
Westview, yes, and, oh, Westview, if anybody, none of you guys were on it, right?
View, Westview, that wasn't over the river, that, but it was a steep slope, yeah.
It was a steep slope and it had a cantilever, the building can't, had a cantilever structure. Okay, one more missing thing that the cantilever made me remember, we still don't have what you're gonna do with the roof deck, I didn't find it, or did I miss it?
Uh, we didn't have a plan, Rudy's been putting something together.
So we need the roof deck, so there's a bunch of little nits. Um, I don't mean to disappoint, I'm not, I mean, that, this one, if you could get all the nits done. We do have a bunch of meetings in November and this should go fairly quickly. If you can get all the nits done, because I think the commission at this point has to look at the site plan standards and special permit standards and say, have these been sufficiently met? And that's the last step that we, when Dennis said regulatory wise, what are we missing, I think people are struggling with. This is, you know, is there the preservation of natural resources versus what we know is our mandate from the, our Affordable Housing Plan? You know, it's the cut, it's the cut, the change in the, in the, you know, all of that, so that's what everybody's got to get their brain around. Um, now, I guess, Mr. Mr. LaRoe would give you some options for, you know, you're not missing a lot of stuff.
Well, uh, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Yesky, go ahead, Yesky goes first.
Are we gonna hear from the public?
Yeah, but first we're, we're sort of talking.
Okay, but I thought we were.
Okay, all right, we can let the public go, um, Mr. Hegney, I've just been ordered to let the public talk. Uh, do you want to talk? You look very unhappy, why don't you go ahead, Mr. Hegney, and then we'll let the public talk, they've got their hands.
Well, I, I, I have sort of a basic issue that I wanted to go over with the commission, because I'm hearing that the, the so-called nits uh, are not something that is difficult for us to address, we can come back to you with that. But I'm also hearing, you know, the, the wall's too big, the buil- building's too bulky, uh.
But it's a question of.
Case, that, that, that I really can't fix.
So, Mr. Hegney, that's.
The property that we're dealing with, and there was one, there's another part to this.
Mr. Hegney, Mr. Hegney, you misheard me, what I said to the commission was this is the outstanding issue in people's heads and they need to wrap their brains around whether that kind of, oh, I'm not crazy about this and that, um, somebody's, um, um, and, uh, Tony, can somebody mute Tony? Tony, mute. Thank you, okay, what I'm saying is, I agree with you, Mr. Hegney, you can't address this kind of foot dragging that we're doing. It is our job to say, we're gonna, we're looking at six fifteen and six seventeen, and although we're foot dragging. There is no specific item, or there is a specific item on those that has or has not been addressed, and I agree with you, there's, it's, I'm not seeing a change you can make at this point, especially since you're not an architect. But I'm not seeing what you would need to do, I see a list of to-do items for you that you could do in short order. I'm not seeing, does anybody else see a way that Mr. Hegney could make a material change to this proposal that would make you more comfortable with it?
No, I do not, I think I he, it's. Building is, building is what it is, HTC is done. Landscaping is what it is, I think it's, they've got to do their best to make sure that actually whatever happens in the top, happens in the top.
Right.
The wall's been addressed. The drainage, I mean, the drainage, they're doing the best they can with, you know, storage, water quality, water discharge. Um, and actually, it's, it's probably a great idea, engineering says it's okay. And it's discharging into the street system, and the street system doesn't affect water quality, it is what it is, just goes into the catch basin.
No, the street system affects the water quality in the Byram River, which, my friend, is why your beach closes. Um, I'm just telling you. I'm just telling you.
The pool.
I know, well, plus, Nick, you know, Nick says it's not affecting the water quality, I'm just reminding him what happens to the Byram Beach a lot. And some of that's ninety-five, okay, so, Mr. Hegney, I'm not, you misheard me, because I'm not saying I'm not seeing that, I think it's up to us, you get the nits done, but it is up to us because I'm not hearing us at the moment cite a specific standard in either six fifteen or six seventeen that you are, have failed to meet, um, are clearly failed to me. So unless we say that, okay, I'm gonna let you talk now.
There, there's one other item that I really wanted to bring to the commission's attention. You'd, you had a regulation six one ten, the thought was that, uh, provided for too much development. Uh, you had a moratorium for, I think it was eighteen months, you adopted the regulation that we have applied to this property. And so, we're at the point seven five, we're not at the point nine that was reduced. We're at, uh, three stories, not three and a half stories, or four stories, uh. We, uh, are at four thirty-eight feet, ten inches, not at forty-seven and a half feet, uh, and.
Yes, I, I hear you.
If you're gonna, if you're going to develop. Properties like this with moderate income housing units, uh, the, the buildings, yeah, the buildings will be bigger, but that's what the regulation provides.
So I'm guessing that what you were gonna say, you said you had it in your head before my comments, I'm gonna repeat them. We, we want to see six one ten used. We know that there is, I, I see the hesitation on the commission about this proposal at the moment. But I'm not hearing articulated what those specifics are, except it's just a tough site and the answer isn't the nicest, the best answer in the world. But we, I would say, everyone here, I'm gonna speak for everybody, wants to see six one ten used. And once again, Mr. Hegney, we want to see housing diversity advanced and more options for people, so we know that. So you don't have to lecture us about it in this situation, we are aware of it. But, and so that's why I'm directing the commission that, except for this list of outstanding items to address. Unless someone could sort of speak up right now and say that there's a significant standard that's not being met. We're gonna need to get our brains around this proposal as it stands. That's what I'm saying, and it's all of, I mean, nobody, this is not an ideal lot, we get it, and that's what's bothering everybody, but okay, does that say it? All right, um, there are two people from the public who wish to speak. The first speaker, oh, hold on a second, I can't read that name, is Marshall Carroll, go ahead, Mr. Carroll.
Uh, hi, long meeting, guys, you got more to do?
Oh, no, this is short so far, go ahead.
Okay, have you read the letters that I wrote, because I asked.
We have read the letters that you wrote.
Like you to address them and answer them.
Yes, we have read your letters, everybody has a copy.
Can you address my questions?
We have been, we haven't been addressing the traffic issue, because.
Asking questions about LBR zone, which the applicant asked for, and you've granted. And the fact that it promotes retail to, to, uh, uh, community.
So again, Mr. Carroll, because, and we've had this conversation several times when you've been here. Neighbors came to us early on in the application process and asked for all residential. So we rewrote the regulation to allow this type of proposal to be all residential because your neighbors wanted it to be all residential, and they thought that would have less negative impact on the community. That's why it is that, so that's why we shifted away from a retail use, and I've said that to you before. I know you're an important voice, but there were other voices on this that asked for a different treatment. And we did that because it seemed to make sense. Keep going.
Explain to me what the new regulation is, because I copied the regulations off the website in my letter. And it makes no provision to, to, uh, promote.
Six one ten, hold on a second.
The issue is, Mr. Carroll, is that it was in the amended section of the regulation, so if you're looking at the published version. It's not referenced in that, it is referenced on.
On the website and the, in the red letters.
Vised sections.
So right when you open the website at the top, it has the regulations we've revised. And it's six one ten, somebody help me quick with what the citation is in six one ten, no?
It is, um, it is application twenty-three, twenty twenty-three.
One ten E three, no, that's, that's the handicap spaces, go ahead, Patrick.
It's one ten C one B.
Okay.
It is the, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, it's the sixth amendment, um, in the, in the section regarding the regulation, regarding the regulations, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I, I don't have it in front of me, I can go back and read it.
Okay, so yeah, on the website, if you go to the.
I'm just asking you, does it, there's this new regulation allow you to, uh, allow it to overrule, uh, six one oh three C, and, uh, yeah, six one oh three C, which says that the purpose of an LBR zone, all LBR zones is to promote retail development. Are you now saying that you can eliminate any possibility of retail to advance the six one ten goals?
No, you're saying that the purpose of the, of the LBR zone is to promote retail. But that doesn't preclude you having a hundred percent residential use in it.
Yes, you can put it in the back, you don't, you, you don't have.
It doesn't preclude you.
Away the possibility of storefronts.
It does not, the purposes of the, of the LBR don't preclude you from having a hundred percent residential use building. And in fact, we've done those in other locations, so you can have an a hundred percent, um, residential use building, even though the overall purpose of the LBR is to promote business, go ahead, Patrick.
No, I, yeah, I think, I think it's not a, uh, prohibition of resi- retail, it's a, it's a permission to have dwelling units on the first floor under certain circumstances.
Yeah, well, the problem there is, again, you're taking away the possibility of storefronts. As I, I don't think it changed six one oh three.
I get it, Mr. Carroll, I.
Please may I finish, this is a problem. Please may I finish? This is a problem with virtual meetings. Okay, I could, if I was in front of you, I could put up a placard with this stuff on me. Please let me speak. What I'm reading is, and I don't think this has changed, is an additional goal is to encourage housing where appropriate, so as to meet diversity. The primary goal for LBR zones, according to this language, is to promote community-oriented retail. You could have residential on an LBR lot, but there's nothing that I can see that says you can overrule the primary goal. I think the, if, if you've made a statutory change, as you said, I don't see it.
Mr. Carroll, six one oh three A purposes. An additional goal is to encourage housing where appropriate, so as to meet the diverse housing needs of the town's residents, as well as provide daytime market that supports and strengthens the business community.
Yeah, I regard, I read that as secondary. According to the, the, the first paragraph in six one, six one, six one oh three A is the goal of the LBR zones is to protect and encourage neighborhood-oriented development. Way down at the bottom, it says, an additional goal is housing. So you can do both, which was the original proposal they made. When I first came in, there were two storefronts on, on Glenville Street. Okay, go back to that. Don't make a big residential building on the street.
Mr. Carroll, for the, I've been telling you this at meeting after meeting. Your neighbors came in early on in this application, and they asked us, several neighbors wanted us to change this so it would be all residential. You are the only person who has objected to that of all the people who have spoken about this application.
I'll tell you what, you're gonna postpone this, you'll get a lot more opposition. And I don't understand how you can make a change, you know, when, when, seems to, you know, again, I read plain English. I'm not a lawyer. Okay? And I would much prefer to see storefronts than people's apartments and people's bedrooms.
I can tell you how we can do that change under state law. The overriding mandate that we have under state law is that we should advance housing. I don't have the statute open in front of me, but in the, in the section that, that the state statute that, that enables zoning commissions to exist makes as a condition of what we do, that we advance housing. This is what I just said to Mr. Hegney, we are trying to advance housing. Don't be mad at me that we're not trying, because we are. And that's what, so that's the trade-off we had to make. The neighbors said to us when they came, we want it not to be commercial on the first floor. So we changed our regulation.
If you change the regulation, I need to see it. I'm looking at the existing regulations.
Patrick is going to mail you the new language.
If it's the first floor apartments, I've already read it. Okay, this is not the first floor apartments. This is the purpose of LBR, what the primary goal is and the secondary goal. Now, if there's a state statute that overrides it, I'll be happy to read it.
You can have, so you have to look, Mr. Carroll, at the entirety of the LBR zone. You have a hundred percent commercial in one part of it. You might have an a hundred percent residential in another. But it's the entirety of the LBR zone that you're looking at.
My reading, you took away streets, uh, street frontage and made it into apartments.
I understand that, Mr. Carroll, but-
Retail environment. Now, the application previously-
All right. Well, let's agree to disagree because I, I know I've answered your question at every meeting on this topic. And I'm gonna keep saying the same thing to you. What else would you like to discuss with us?
Okay, what about the height of the building?
They're below the maximum allowed for the six one ten building. They're seven, I'm sorry, nine feet, Mr. Hegney, below the maximum allowed.
According to what I read, it's thirty-five feet.
No, because this is an application under six, six dash one ten that gets a zoning bonus for including moderate income housing.
Okay, I didn't see that.
The maximum, maximum height is forty feet, three stories. I know, it's fewer than four units, so it's forty feet.
Okay. Now, what I just noticed in this application, which wasn't part of my, is you're allowing it to have two driveway cuts on Angeles Drive for a very small parcel.
We have an issue with that that we keep discussing. We have talked about the driveway extensively tonight. DPW has signed off on it. And I think it was Nick who raised it earlier.
Yes, DPW waiver was issued on ten three twenty-three between the driveways. And that was signed by the deputy commissioner of public works.
And that's who decides driveways, not us. That's who decides the distancing in the driveways. They override us on driveways.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carroll.
I'd like you to send me what you, what you think is the state regulation that overrules or override.
I'm not, that's not what overrides. I'm just telling you that the way you conceptualize, so what you do with zoning is you have to put a concept hat on. And the concept hat is we are supposed to advance housing diversity and inclusion. And that means that we might mix up our neighborhoods. The concept hat is this is what you strive to do. Overall, you may have some all business uses in your LBR. You may have some mixed uses. Or with this moderate income one, we did it as all residential. I, I understand your point. I fought for retail continuity on other applications. On this one, we obeyed the wishes of the community at large, which asked us-
I think you misread that. People were objecting.
We had several public hearings. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Carroll. At least you're passionate. Thank you, sir. Um, Peter Alex, Peter Alexander is our next speaker. Mr. Alexander, go ahead.
You can hear me.
Yes, we can. You got it. You've nailed it. All right, sir.
I'd like to kind of take the cuffs off Mr. DeAndrea because I don't know why the DPW hates trees so much, but the retention of the first rain after drought periods, which includes very dry Septembers and Octobers, and who knows, maybe November, I think is really, besides being extremely costly to put these gadgets underground, they really can negatively affect the health of the trees. And I know you guys are more involved in the sociology and the tax creation.
No, I've known, not sexually, not what we do.
DPW are not specialists about trees.
Well, okay, so Mr. Alexander, we don't do sociology. And we don't do whatever the other thing is. And Mr. DeAndrea has never, I've heard him at many meetings. He's had a lot of issues with some of the standards in the drainage manual over time, and he articulates them. And, and we know, and we push for trees, and he is trying to meet the drainage manual as required by DPW. I heard in his voice where he wasn't crazy about part of it tonight, but it is what it is.
That's right. It is what it is.
It, because DPW is the deciding factor on what kind of drainage is put in, and then we come in and try to get more trees in. Your bigger issue is that you're on rock ledge and your trees are gonna need these pockets in order to take, which hopefully Mr. Pop has solved. Is that it, Mr. Alexander?
Yeah, that's it for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hegney. We've heard from the public. We are trying to advance housing. We are trying to advance diversity. And I don't believe anybody has raised a suggestion for how you might revise your site plan or a major objection based on six fifteen and six seventeen. So what I see is that if you would come back to us with all the outstanding items addressed, that we would be in a position to make a decision.
Understood, Madam Chair. There, there was one minor item in, in the knits, which was on why two refuse areas. And I did talk to my client about that.
I mean, somebody asked.
There, there, they have a smaller one in the basement so that the residents would have the convenience of that. And then the maintenance person for the building would take it out to where the actual garbage truck is going to remove it.
The point in the staff report was if you ever needed the extra parking space.
We, we've taken it to heart that the commission did not want us to have extra parking spaces here, so we have eliminated seven of them.
No, no, but what I'm saying is the extra, if you ever needed the parking space that is being taken up by the refuse area was the point in the staff report. Not, we're not asking you to add a parking space. Mr. Hegney, you're turning my words around tonight. We're not asking you to add parking. We're just saying you are taking up a parking space with a second refuse area, and that was the comment in the staff report. Okay.
Very, very minor matter, but I did want to mention it.
Okay, Mr. Pop, I hope you can, your tree pockets are scary. I never heard.
Matt Pop, I just had a, you know, would it be better to have a, a two walls, a lower wall that was like six feet? Then like an eight-foot gap, and then the taller wall in the back, and we could plant, you know, like red cedars and, and between the walls, the screen.
I don't know. Nick, where's Nick? Nick? You're better at visualizing than I am.
You know, then you don't see the big wall.
I think that would, actually, if it's possible, I think that would be only predicated on how much you can actually remove of the ledge. If there's something you'd like to explore, I, I think, yeah, I would, wouldn't prevent that, you know, look at it. If anything, if you do it and it seems plausible, just show this in a site section so we see how it's going to work from the driveway, parking area, setback to the first wall, setback to the second wall, that kind of thing, in terms of heights and stuff.
Very good.
Thank you.
Here's to the row.
Madam Chair, I just want clarity on something you said earlier. Are, are you asking that we mail Mr. Carroll an actual physical copy?
No, just email him.
Okay, I, that's, I just want to make sure I, I heard, I heard mail and I, I wasn't sure if we were talking.
Copy, do a, copy the text out where he can see it. And I'm gonna send you affirmatively advanced, Mr. Hegney, you're gonna remember it. It's affirmatively advanced affordable housing. That's what the sentence is, right, in eight-two. And commissions shall affirmatively advance, regulations shall affirmatively advance affordable housing. That's what it says.
Right. And, and I don't want to belabor this much longer, but the, the amendment in the LBR two is that the commission, after a special permit and a consideration under the special permit standards, may, not shall, but may find that first floor residential is appropriate in the context of the neighborhood and to develop it without adversely affecting the retail continuity, pedestrian circulation.
Send all that to Mr. Carroll. I know why he feels passionately about it, because I fought just as passionately on his side of it a couple of times. But in this one, we were doing what the neighbors wanted.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't want anyone to take away here that we have totally, you know, changed the LB, an LBR two zone.
Nobody thinks, I mean, we don't think that, or we wouldn't have voted in favor.
Well, I, I'm not talking about the commission. There's anybody-
Oh, you wouldn't be talking, you said nobody here and-
No, no, well, there is, there's, there is not, there, there are people here, not nobodies, but people.
Okay. All right. Okay, so the, for the twenty-four people attending then, make clear that we were not overriding the business purposes. All right, Mr. Hegney. I, so back to Patrick. So we've got, this is late breaking news. We have a, we have a meeting on the thirteenth of November. And that was, that's when you would try to accommodate him? If we can keep it short. And guys, everybody's instructed to keep it short because it's a really big meeting. But I think we're there for, there's some outstanding items, but I think we're there. So, Patrick, does that work?
Or I, I just may have the zoning enforcement officer schedules, the variances that night, and then Mr. Hegney will have to pick and choose.
Actually, you already did that, Pat, so I've had to deal with that as well.
If he's not there, we can just do what? Okay, so Mr. Hegney, if you would give us an extension to our next meeting?
Certainly, Madam Chair.
All right. Okay.
Send it over shortly.
So this application will be continued and we will move on. I don't know. Oh, there it is. I couldn't, I can't click on Tom for all of a sudden. Okay. Mr. Brower?
Yes, and Ms. Pizinbono.
Oh, and Ms. Pizinbono. Uh, Mr. Brower, can you raise your hand?
Think I've got them both. Oh, maybe not. There you go. All set.
All right, our next application, the next two application, the next application number seven was postponed. That was Nightingale Veterinary Partners at one hundred Putnam Green, five Western Junior. And we will now go to a hundred East Putnam LLC for a final coastal site plan and special permit to change a non-conforming use, one non-conforming use to another. It's ground floor, bank to medical spa. And it is on a site that currently has a building under construction, hard to miss. Hello, Ms. Pizinbono. And hello, Mr. Brower.
Good evening.
Uh, Mr. Brower, do you want to say anything to open?
Yeah, just briefly, we, this is our third time here. And our last meeting, the commission had requested us to provide charts and documentation based on usage of similar pause operations to convince the commission that we did in fact have adequate parking onsite, given the uses. So what you reviewed and discussed at the briefing session yesterday, we also were watching and listening in. And, but just briefly, we had shown a usage chart, given the worst possible case conditions. We extended the in-between time for when one of the rooms could be turned around to a minimum of twenty minutes. Confirmed how we would actually be scheduling on a staggered basis and provided the usage data from these other sites that showed that they never reached fifty percent maximum capacity. So we're convinced, and I, I think that may have been the consensus of the commission yesterday, that, that in fact, we do have sufficient parking for the proposed uses.
Is it okay if I jump in? Okay, so you walked into the middle of the center of a perfect storm, which is, as Ms. Pizinbono knows, we're seeing a lot of this type of application. And it's almost ironic because we once asked, well, we're getting all these banks, what's gonna go where the banks are? And boom, here's your answer. And we've been struggling with how to do the parking and the regulations and et cetera. What, as we looked at how you're gonna run this, this looks to us, even though it's technically a medical spa, or it looks to me, I'll, but as we were talking yesterday, it's a medical spa, looks like that. But really, it's operating more like a personal service establishment. And as such, because medical sort of implies, as we were saying in the briefing yesterday, sitting in the waiting room for a long time. So, as you have put this plan of operation forward, you're gonna have one person in each of your stations, in each of your chairs, if you will. Then you're gonna have a break. And then you'll get the new people, and you're gonna have a twenty-minute break, and you're gonna stagger it. So that at no time are you gonna have more than ten people, and you have enough parking to accommodate that. That really, the model that better fits it is a personal service establishment. But this technically has to be called a medical spa. But the bottom line of it is the commission, it sees your parking as working and now sees a way that it can, and thank you, Ms. Pizinbono, for all the patience, now see a way that we can rewrite our regulation, so it makes it easier for future applicants. Because what I'm leaning towards is this should be, this type of thing should be- Because what I'm leaning towards is this should be, this type of thing should be a type of personal service. And therefore, that requires one space per customer. And that that's what we should do moving forward, when it looks like yours looks. Now, another one might have a longer medical procedure, like the folks that do all the different botox injections. But for you, you're laughing, but for you, that's how it looks, and that's kind of how we're seeing it, so you have been patient with us and have helped us come up with how we would handle this in the future, and you've made it, gosh, I shouldn't be saying that, you maybe made it easier to get competition. Sorry, that's not what you wanted, but you've made it easier for us to figure out how to set a standard. And so to the commission, um, what we were counting up yesterday is it's basically one space per chair, per, per spot, because um, the IV space isn't really, the IVs are more like beds, right? Yes?
They're like chairs.
They're like chairs, so it's.
Kind of like reclined.
Yeah, and but then you have maybe the, the sauna and the tub are a little different, so, but one space per customer makes a lot of sense. But the requirement of having the nurse have six spaces really didn't, doesn't make sense for this use. So I think we're there, and I personally am very grateful because you've been very kind in us working this through. Um, does anybody want to add something to that?
Mr. Brower, just quick question, uh, did no more than eleven guests on site? That's kind of fluctuating, but that's kind of the maximum?
I said, I thought it was ten.
Okay, and it's eleven guests, and again, how many staff?
Oh.
At that point, at, with the maximum guest, how many staff?
Two.
Okay.
So I have ten on site at any point in time, is it? Is it?
We have ten stations and two, uh, two.
So, but no more than how many customers are gonna be on site?
Jasmine, you wanna?
Well, yeah, the, the, the customers, in one hour, it could be eleven.
Okay, so it's eleven, okay.
Yeah, not at any one time.
Okay.
That's, that's why I stagger the service times a bit.
Got it, okay, so I can't find where I put ten, but it's in here somewhere, so, oh, here it is.
The staff is, is, there's one nurse and one front desk staff, but remember, the nurse is only there for.
For six hours.
And so then there's only one front desk staff.
All right.
Right, and that's, that's eleven guests, um, taking advantage of, taking advantage of service. It, does that include waiting as well, or is that? A few extra?
There's no overlap in waiting.
There's twenty minutes in between when the appointment ends and the next one starts, so that you don't have people so that parking space frees up.
Correct, so with the, and we're only talking about the ten minute services, for a sauna, which is an hour, you know, the person is in the sauna for an hour, and then there's a thirty minute turnover time. So while the, the sauna people are in there for an hour, all those other ten minute services are leaving, which is how we've gotten to, you know, ten max, eleven, in, in, like, starting at eight AM and ending at nine AM.
So the minimum time between appointments is twenty minutes.
Correct.
Okay, anything else, you guys?
For two of the services, it's much longer.
For two ser, but that's the minimum.
Right.
Okay, anything else? Alrighty, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application at a hundred East Putnam for a change of use? Ah, yes, I know. Mr. Walsh. And, uh, Mr. Walsh, if you would, go ahead. Are you, I, I imagine you're also at the central middle meeting. Mr. Walsh, go ahead.
It's audio is not working. Mr. Walsh, connect your microphone, it's not connecting.
Your microphones, are you, if you're using earbuds, your earbuds aren't connecting. Of course, he probably can't hear us either.
If you can't hear us, you're probably not listening, right?
No, no, I am, hold on.
Yay, you got it.
Can you hear me? Okay, perfect. Okay, uh, thank you, so, so I, I just, um, live in the neighborhood, right, and I guess I was looking through the documents here, and you know, over the past, um, few years, right, Cos Cob has done a great job of really, you know, improving the streetscape and the walkability of the community, right, and I feel like this, uh, this building, right, the, the new building that's going up here, um, is looking great, it's gonna integrate well into that streetscape. However, I'm concerned about the three windows, um, you know, and they appear to kind of be three permanent window displays. And just kind of concerned that those might not fit into the streetscape, which we're trying to build, you know, if you look at the documentation, right, um, uh, there's an image of, you know, paws and in front, and you have kind of a lobby and then two permanent window displays, it looks like, to the left and right, and a third, you, you know, one window over, so I believe there's eight windows maybe, fronting Route One here, and it looks like three of those eight, um, or, or seven windows, three of those are gonna be kind of permanent displays, and I'm just, you know, I, I don't want this to turn into kind of what the CVS looks like, or, or what some other areas of town look like with permanent displays, you know, and if you look at, I guess, one of my concerns is if you look at, you know, Paws' West Hollywood location, right, it looks like they have a window sticker up and a glazing on one of the windows, and y, y, you know, it's, it's not a great interaction with, with the street, right, and, um, and, you know, their Washington Boulevard location, all the window shades are down, so I don't know kind of if there's stickers or a lobby behind that, but it, it would be great if there's any way to, you know, even if it's just one of those, to increase that interaction, uh, with the street, you know, the, um, the Greenwich Medical Spa in Riverside does it well, not only in their Greenwich location, but also in their, um, you know, Westchester and Westport locations of kind of, you know, y, you know, having all the windows open to the street and really, um, giving that, you know, inviting, um, interaction with the street that I think, uh, where, where I think Cos Cob's really trying to go and, you know, and getting better at moving that way in the future.
Are you able to see the screen share?
Uh, yes, yeah, this, so this is kind of what I was, what I was talking about.
Um, if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, of course.
Um, we, I think we, we discussed this, uh, uh, even at the pre-app, actually covering the windows up. Specifically because behind those windows that are part of the initial, uh, design, were treatment rooms. And rather than get that, that, I'll give you the CVS look where it's just, you know, it's a, it's painted over glass, it's spandrel glass, there's nothing there, it's just a window. Um, the applicant came back with actually the displays, and I think actually, the displays themselves give a little bit of, uh, uh, dynamism to the architecture, to the building. And at the same time, covering the window so it, they can be the, um, exam rooms. Uh, the display is actually for retail, it's showing goods and services for inside, they're not gonna be covered up. They still have some kind of relationship to, to a retail component along the street. Front door is clear, you see right into it, uh, the one to the left as shown on the, the rendering here, um, actually is a, uh, treat, treat, half of it's the lobby, part of, is, part of it's a treatment room. I think I was the only one that was a little concerned about that. Uh, but it's actually buried back, uh, along the sidewalk, uh, behind a wall. But I think that's the only main concern, but the other ones, I think, work really well. Uh, and maintains that kind of walkability, what you're seeing as you walk by the street, it's a, it's a display case. Uh, it may not be clearly all the way into a retail store, but it's still a display, uh, as opposed to just black glass.
Um, so, Mr. Walsh, um, I'm gonna offer the commission to make the motion on this. And, um, what the motion was gonna be, that windows, uh, must be utilized to display merchandise or otherwise provide full visibility to the interior. Uh, the disturbing thing to me about the CVS site is that it has photographs, like, once you've seen them, they're just photographs.
Yeah, it, it's also unchanging, right, I mean, the CVS window appeared that way forever.
Exactly, so the disturbing thing about CVS is like, how many times can you look at the same photograph? And then have the blank wall, so, exactly, and on the back of the CVS building, as you know, the whole wall was covered, the whole glass front was covered with the, um, with an advertisement, which was recently removed, thanks to.
I think, I think it's actually even worse than, I think I remember the building from way back when, way, way back when, there were a series of arched windows, and a few of them were bricked over. Uh, and I think actually, I think it may have been, uh, revised procedures, uh, in the office back in the eighties. But there was supposed to be a series of windows, actually, four of them got bricked over, and the rest of it got covered up with, uh.
Yeah, in any event, we totally understand your concern, on the other hand, Ms. Pizinbono made it clear to us that, you know, she's gonna have people without their clothes on inside, so you didn't say it that way, but um, that, the, the privacy is important, so we were finding a trade-off, and I think the thing that you just made clear for us is let's have that display be rotational, so it changes, the merchandise changes and there's interest, so there's a new product or something that changes. And we'll ask that it be rotating instead of looking at the same dusty bottle of bath gel for ten years.
That'd be much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, uh, now we got a whole bunch of commissioners commenting, Mr. Lowe?
Yeah, I, um, I, I express this, this similar concern to Mr. Walsh, yeah, and as have others. And we are faced with this issue of what, what's going on inside and privacy issues. But I wonder if the applicant might concern, uh, might consider uh, exploring a more dynamic, interactive display that not only changes, but I mean, I don't know whether it would be something akin to, uh, what WPIX in New York, uh, did in nineteen sixty-six, which was to introduce a Yule log on Christmas Eve. But you could have something that was a little bit more animated, a little livelier, and not only subject to change, but it might, you might have passersby anticipating what that change would look like.
You can become Macy's.
I believe, I believe having any kind of an interactive display, like a TV or a display screen is prohibited by our signage regulations.
Yeah, I, I, I think we're good, it's a cool idea, but I think the safest thing is to just say rotational display of merchandise.
Okay, I'm done for the night, thank you.
You know, we're just gonna not have the same bubble bath, Mr. LaRoe.
Dusty ba, bath gel, I'm putting that in the, on the list.
Well, I guess, I guess my, my, my comment was gonna be now a question of Mr. Lowe, you, you were suggesting a rotation or not, uh, not to be so stagnant with the decorations in the window.
Yes, but he was also saying Christmas stuff or.
No, no, I, I, I cited that, it, it, yeah, that, that was, I'm not suggesting you put the Yule log in there.
I just, no, 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 you're, you're just being illustrative, I understand, thank you.
There, there must be, uh, more creative people outside of the assembled group here, and no offense should be taken by anybody.
We, we very much hope.
Patrick and I just had this.
Something that is not just some poster or some, uh, uh, medical device in the window, I mean, you know, I think we can do better than that.
Yeah, and not to minimize.
Bag.
Yeah, and, and I, and I don't want to minimize Mr. Walsh's concerns or other people, because I think we had, the commission had this at the last meeting. Um, the, the new regulations, there are, there are preclusions in that to stop that, um, the outcome of the stagnant, you know, uh, plastered wall sticker type situation, so um, even if the commission was in favor of something like it, it, it wouldn't be necessarily permitted. Um, so this type of display though is, right, this is an honest storefront type of situation, so, and, and the applicant, I think, is trying to, you know, comply with the regulation.
Okay, Ms. Pizinbono, you wanted to say something?
No, I was just gonna say, I fully have every intention on rotating out the products, you know, I don't want to see the same thing all year, and, you know, having seasonal displays, et cetera. I promise you, I'll buy your seasonal candles there.
Yeah, Mr. Lowe will be happy.
Forget the seasonal thing, I, I, I'm looking for some animation, some, some sort of, uh, add a little life to that window, which is what, I mean, wh, when you have a, a clear window and you can see into a store, you're exposing an, another part of life.
Hey, and if you want input, several of us live in the neighborhood. So we'll come in and bother you.
I said I was done, all right, I'm done.
Okay, you're done, um, any further comment from the commission, any further, you would, do you want to close with anything, Mr. Brower?
No, I think, well, we took that last batch of comments to heart, that'll be part of the program.
All right, and we've got it conditioned, um, does anybody object to closing this application at this time?
No.
Alrighty, then, uh, this application is hereby closed. And, um, we'll, we'll decide it, I'll put forward a motion tonight, um, best of luck, Ms. Pizinbono.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have to, Mr. Brower stays, but not immediately, goodbye, Mr. Bazili.
Yes, goodbye, goodbye, yeah, thank you.
Good evening.
Uh, you too, it's a nice early evening so far.
Okay, well, just don't party too much and you'll be all set.
See you then, thank you.
Bye bye. Alrighty, so now we go back to the regular meeting because we've postponed, um, applications nine and ten, which were the old Greenwich Village District Committee. And we go to our first discussion item, which is Old Track Properties for a pre-application review. This is to convert a use from industrial to private early education and, uh, serving infants through kindergarten at sixteen Old Track Road in the GB. And Mr. Tessie is back. And we have a lot of questions for you, so you could let us start with the questions, because we're only, where's my hook?
I mean, here, and it's twenty minutes.
Would I, would I?
Twenty minutes.
Max, that's, you, you should aspire to much less, Mr. Tessie, in my view, but, yeah.
Okay, to me, so that we are very efficient. Uh, it should be Mr. Matt Taylor, hopefully is, uh, is somewhere.
Taylor, raise your hand.
And Matt is the Director of Development for, for Primrose on the East Coast.
All right.
Uh, he's opened actually, which is amazing to me, but he's opened, uh, over two hundred of the Primrose stores, so he's got a little bit of experience, not stores, but, uh, facilities, education.
It's all right, they're selling the children.
I was listening, I was listening to the previous application.
Yeah, yeah, you got confused, okay.
Was trying to figure out what display we had put up, but.
All right.
Evening, everyone.
Yes, because I think that is the better one to answer concisely for conferences.
All right.
Your, some of your questions, as you know, the facility, I just quickly, uh, first of all, uh, we are not proposing to add, that was brought up yesterday, any, uh, to the building, we're not adding any floor area. It's all distinct floor area on two floors in the rear, pre, of the, uh, I'll call it the Equinox Building, as you probably all would too. And it, uh, was occupied, uh, for many, many years by CNG at a, with a fairly active uh, operation, air service vehicles, passenger vehicles, and, uh, trucks and trailer trucks with, uh, with equipment for their, uh, for their work efforts, basically in Greenwich. Uh, with that, uh, we're happy to answer questions.
Okay, Mr. McRae, and then I believe Ms. Jenkins had a lot of questions yesterday, so I'm gonna let them go, and my hook is on call, do not get distracted.
Uh, questions, issues, uh, playground, um, it's right against the, uh, railroad, I would be looking for landscape, some kind of landscape in the playground itself, so when it's hot, uh, during the summer months, we've got some shade there. Um, and its relationship to, uh, the railroad, and it, according to the development plan, it says existing pavement to remain. Be great if we could move some of that out so we don't have it so hot. The parking and drop off, uh, I would like to see, um, the plan for that as a specific. And hopefully it's segregated from the rest of the parking, seeing as if, I understand this, you have a hundred and forty-four students potentially enrolled and twenty-five staff, that's an awful lot of people that, uh, coming and going. Um, and specifically, this is going to be the heavy lift, uh, a complete traffic study. And not just that intersection, I think we should be looking from about Livingston Place all the way down to, uh, uh, Field Point Road, uh, itself, uh, uh itself. Uh, it seems with all of the issues that are happening or all of the things that are happening here, we have Equinox, this as a potential. Um, we have the apartment complex, we have the vehicle storage, and then we have a potential um uh retirement home at the end. Old, uh, Old Track Road at uh Old Field Point or uh where would I have it? I guess it's out there, is going to be even worse than it has already come to. So having that tra, that uh traffic study is a critical issue. Um, and I would hope that it's done properly during the right times and we get a good sense of this because it would seem trying to put a hundred and forty-four and twenty-five staff into this may just completely make everything fail from Livingston all the way down to Field Point. Thank you.
With, um, with that, maybe it's a good time for, for you.
No, no, we're sending you away with questions and then you come back with the application.
Oh, okay. I thought.
Okay.
Few questions.
That's the plan. If there's a little bit of time left, but let's get all the questions to you first.
Okay.
And then if there's a little bit of time, you can sort of give us a general picture. But you know, we're geeky, so we've read a lot of this stuff. Madam Jenkins?
Yeah, I think uh just to, to some more detail about something that, that Nick has mentioned. Um, pickup and drop off, especially with small children creates amazing problems. And we've had it with existing uh preschool and nursery schools here in town. Um, particularly if you have a large number of small children, it's not just a matter of uh, you know, taking the kid's hand, taking them into, to the building. Um, if you're gonna have babies and things like that, you're going to have longer and more detailed uh requirements for timing. So uh, you know, the capacity appears to be a hundred and forty-four, and it looks like, if I'm correct, there are fourteen classrooms. So the issue would be, how do you plan to handle the drop off and pickup? Because if people start lining up in the, in the parking lot, it's going to make the issue of the traffic on Old Track even worse because you're going to start um people making left and right hand turns and, and backing up in traffic. So again, two hour, uh, if you've got a hundred and forty-four children and you have a two hour drop off period, and I'm sure it's all, you know, seven, seven to eight thirty to nine clocks can be very busy. That's gonna have to be planned very carefully and they'll have to be not only adequate room, but just adequate timing in terms of when people are showing up and whether you can schedule that in a meaningful way. So uh, that was my point.
Okay, anybody else have questions or guidance? All right, um, so key concern you're hearing is we're worried about um how heavy the traffic gets in this area. Worried about the peak hours at Equinox, which happened to coincide, we think somewhat in the morning, for sure, that coincides in the morning. Um, may not coincide in the afternoon. Mr. Taylor would know. Um, he'll, he'll have to give us the hours of operation, but Equinox, as we remember, Mr. Tessie, the peak is around five PM. Your kids should be gone by then.
If I may, Madam Chair, according to the information provided, six thirty AM to six thirty PM. That's all day and.
For the kids, but Equinox tends to the eve, I can't remember when the evening peak is exactly, so they may all overlap all around.
I think it would overlap with everything.
Yeah, it may, Mr. Tessie has described himself how people push to park at Equinox so that they can be really close to the building. And even when they're, yes, you've said that, even though they're going there to exercise, you joked about it one day.
Oh, I know what you mean. They're everybody.
Yeah, even though they're gonna exercise.
Greenwich thing.
Yeah, no, no, it happens in the whole world. Everybody, okay, so it's this, it's this, everybody coming at the same time. Can you safely, that's safe, creating a safe situation for the kids for pickup and drop off? The other thing I think Nick was referring to is we have individually, many of us have seen accidents right at the, at where Old Track comes into whatever you want to call it, their Field Point Road. Hey, man.
All, all Field Point Road.
All Field Point Road. Um, so it, we've seen accidents, there was a school bus, there's, there's trouble at that intersection because it's a funny, then there's an offset there. Some concern with the noise, Mr. Tessie's um client in the past on, on, at the site has addressed it. Well, Nick, did you mention, we don't know if the assisted living facility is going in, but you might want to consider.
Yeah. I, it's, it's, it's actually the living facility, Equinox, the apartment complex, the vehicle storage, the paint store. Uh, there's a parking lot, parking garage there as well. So there's a lot of things that actually have to be done and crash, crashed out is important. But that whole section from Livingston all the way down to Old Field Point has dropped to a level of service F, in my opinion. We really need to take a look at this because the specific intersection between Old Track and, and Railroad or where, whatever, whatever it is where it comes up has completely failed. And I think it's something we may have recognized in previous applications, so we gotta really resolve it now.
Then, just since we threw all these questions at you.
Yes.
We know that there's a need in town at the moment. We have had a generational turnover during uh post, during COVID and post-COVID. Um, interestingly, it has continued in the last year or two. And we are seeing a huge turnover. We know that this kind of facility uh will be, is, is needed in town, but we just need to make sure that your circulation is safe and then your pickup and drop off is safe. You now have most of eleven minutes.
Well, I, I, certainly I listened to your uh intently, if you will. Your comments.
Sure you did.
I wasn't billing somebody else at the same time, but um look, I think everything you stated is understandable. I think it would help you um particularly, I'd feel bad if you didn't speak since I dragged him here. And so Matt, it would be great to introduce you to introduce yourself and um, you know, give the commission members your thoughts, how you arrived at this, this particular location. And uh, what, given your experience, you envisioned for operations there?
Sure, yeah, um, thanks, John. Um, Madam Chair and members of the board, I'll keep this brief as well. Um, I've been in the childcare development realm for decades at this point. So I um have the same safety concerns, certainly that the board has. And the last thing I want to do is develop a project that may put a family, you know, in a situation where it's not the safest situation. So I feel this site works well for us on a number of levels. I mean, I'd be remiss to say certainly it's tight, there's no question, but uh, and I recognize that uh the initial look at this would be, huh, how's that gonna work? But I, but we developed several sites like this and I feel very comfortable that we've got adequate pickup and drop off. And the one thing I want to make uh the board aware of, unlike a day school or, you know, nursery schools in certain situations, parents aren't waiting for someone to get their kids out of a car. I mean, they have to park their car physically, take their children in, sign them into the school, bring them to their classroom and get back in their car. That's how we operate in all of our five hundred and forty locations across the country. And it takes, the rough math is, you know, somewhere between seven and ten minutes to do that. And it's pretty staggered, especially post-COVID, it's even more staggered with uh flexible work hours. Uh, we've seen uh this period of a couple hours from six thirty to nine thirty turn into even longer than that sometimes. So I, I'm comfortable that we can, you know, get through a more formal presentation and get the board um understanding how we operate. Um, so I, I, I don't want to belabor the issue, but I understand it. I hear it on almost every application and I appreciate it. And I, we have um a lot of data to support um a site of this size that should work well. Because if it doesn't work well, um, it's inconvenient for parents, it's not safe, and quite frankly, they're gonna find another alternative if it doesn't work properly. So we know that.
Good point. Scare one mom.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I know there was some discussion about the playground. Uh, these plans certainly haven't been fully developed, but this is a concept plan. Um, we will have uh, a full playground that accommodates all age groups. It'll have a field turf surface, it won't have asphalt. Uh, we do, I want uh a landscape barrier and a partial sound barrier anyway, you know, something we'll design into it. But we obviously wanted to get on a pre-read to you folks, something to simple to show where it's going and what we're doing. And we'll have the details um we, to show with you at the application. So um shade, we have shade structures in the player is a very important piece, not only the licensing, but to keep the kids um comfortable and safe in summer months. Um, and that, those are the, I understand those are two big concerns. I know the Greenwich market reasonably well. I've done a lot of work in Connecticut, I've done a lot of work on the East Coast and yeah, traffic is always gonna be a point of discussion. Um, I do think that based in our demographic research, uh Greenwich is an excellent town for us to be in. Uh, there's a huge need for childcare based on what's available. Um, and I also think a lot of our customers are already making those turning movements to Equinox as well. Um, I'm not a traffic engineer, I've never claimed to be one, but I think you'll find the traffic uh study will probably vet out a lot of those concerns. So that's in a nutshell for me. If there's any uh specific questions I can answer, I'm happy to.
I can ask you one other favor. When you do the traffic study, we've gotten a little touchy about, oh, the people were there anyway, the pass by credit is what the, we've got a couple of this traffic engineers who say, oh, you know, they were there anyway. And there's, so there's no, no impact. And you know, that's not what we want to get to, so then.
Yeah, and, and I'm not saying that, Madam Chair, what I'm saying is we have um young moms who are definitely going to Equinox, so.
Oh, absolutely.
And I'm not saying that that is, uh, I'm not saying it's everyone, but there's certainly a few of them.
Yes, absolutely. And there's even, there's a stereotype, we got it. I mean, you drop off the kids and you go off and do your, your daily routine. Um, okay, anything else, you guys, any questions for us?
Uh, no, I mean, I look forward to working with uh, with you and the board and the professionals to come up with a project that everyone's happy with. Now, we want, we're long term. Folks in this market, if we can put it together, it's a twenty year lease. It's something that we want to, um, you know, we try to be good partners. Our failure rate is less than one half of one percent of our last forty-three years, so. When we open the school, we tend to stay there. Uh, and I do really think it's an excellent um market for us. And I have driven the market at peak hours because it's obviously my responsibility to do that. So I get it, but I also think that um we can come up with a solution that'll work for everyone.
I'm sure it's like every suburb close to a major city in the United States. I mean, I can't imagine that we have the ownership. When you're close to a big city, you get that. Um, Mr. Tessie, do you know if the assisted living facility is gonna be moving forward?
It, it's interesting. I, I happen to ask Mr. D'Angelo, who is the project engineer, as you heard from the uh, never pronounced the gentleman's name recently. Did not recently, but um, I'm gonna be talking to Mr. Cone who represents them on different other matters, so. Um, I don't know, I think.
I mean, some use will go in there. So I, I, I was just trying to figure out how you were gonna do your traffic analysis because you'd have to assume that you're gonna have a use in there.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, it's just maybe you use, just go ahead and use what's approved and what was done for that, and we'll just hope for the best because that's.
Well, most probably we're gonna engage uh, John, uh, John Canning. And I believe he, he was the traffic engineer for that project, so.
So.
It makes sense because he has a lot of background data and it's only a couple of years old.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm pretty sure we're gonna wind up using John and I'm there's, that's what you do as part of the plan, uh, part of your, your traffic analysis is you do
Right.
Do your due diligence and take into account prospective new approved projects, so.
Yeah, it's just, my question was, that one hasn't come in and hasn't broken ground, so you have an approval, I think it's safe to say that's what you would act on because that's what is that, that's the use that's there now. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay. No, Mr. Lowe says you got a credit of three minutes for future use.
No, duly noted.
Oh, no, no. I'll trade that for being, I'll trade that for being moved up on the agenda next time.
That was, that was for Mr. Taylor. Sorry, that was not for Mr. Tessie. That was the, all right. I'm not duly backed. Thank you.
Thank you for staying.
Thank you all. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it.
All right.
Did you want to ask for any public comment? Sorry.
Forgot.
Nope.
No, we got.
Public comment?
Right. Public comment. Do we have any comment from the public on the proposed daycare? At, thank you, Bianca, getting, and the proposed daycare facility on Old Track Road, any public comment?
Uh, I was hoping Tom would say something nice about my project. I did that for him earlier.
Yeah, I don't think you made.
Not public.
All right, no public. Okay, we'll see you when you come back. Thank you.
Guys.
All right. Okay, so now we go to the next one.
The last one.
Oh, I always say next.
I say last.
All righty. Our next, um, our next application is TCS Realty LLC, better known as Toyota of Greenwich, for a pre-application review uh to um alter and add to an existing non-conforming use, a car dealership on a property at seventy-five East Putnam Avenue in the LB and P zones. And for the newer people on the commission, we'll go through the P zone thing. Um, as it's kind of confusing. Uh, it was the zone we eliminated. Okay, you can take down that clock and start a new one. All right, um, so Mr. Brower, um. Do you wanna give us a quick, you've got twenty minutes, you've got my stern face over here.
Yes, clock is running. Okay, if you could also uh promote, uh, in case we need him, Architect Andreas Stressman from Randolph.
And Mr. and, and your, and the guy from Toyota.
Clint, Clintstein, yes.
Clintstein, yeah.
Okay, so um.
I'm having a bad look. Andreas, I'll try to promote now. Yeah, um, Mr. Steen, I just tried to promote you and I wasn't able to, there he goes. Okay, he's in. All right, oki do, go ahead, Mr. Brower.
Okay, we'll, we'll go quick here in case you do have questions. We listened in on the briefing session um yesterday and uh understand the primary concerns. I just wanted to give a quick uh intro as to the uh operation here uh was founded fifty years ago by uh Clintstein's father and the two of them have basically run the uh uh operation there for fifty years. And uh they actually have been responsive uh to neighbor concerns uh in terms of screening and actually lighting as well. Uh, Clint spent, uh, this is going back about four or five years ago when the issue came up, like fifteen thousand two hundred some dollars on fence replacing, repair and on landscaping to help with the screening. And uh was approached by someone about the light visibility and he actually turned those uh lights at a different angle to be uh less visible. But so wants to be a good neighbor as far as he knows. Um, he has been one and as to all the landscaping and lighting concerns, uh definitely we're gonna comply um with the, as part of the, the formal submission, um, the current lighting landscape requirement. So um, with that note, we're, we're both heading and all heading in the right direction in terms of making it neighborhood friendly. Um, the application, um, as you can probably tell, is being driven by uh Toyota as were all the other major operations were upgraded years ago, uh, still ongoing up and down West Putnam Avenue. Um, so these are things that the uh, the owner, the dealer manufacturer is, is driving this. And most of it is uh coming about in order to provide a better customer experience um for people coming in, either having service done in the uh within the building, waiting areas. Um, so it's a reconfiguration and a minor expansion of the floor area to accommodate that function. And that's about eleven hundred square feet. And the other component is um a covered service uh pull-in area currently. When someone comes in for service, they're outside in the driveway. This will be covered enclosure on the left side in the, in the circulation where they would be coming in anyhow. Um, so what we're not doing is we're not increasing number of employees, we're not increasing um the uh number of service space. So the operation itself is gonna be as it is, just um, it'll be more, more current and uh is that a question, Madam Chair?
Yeah, you're not increasing the service base, but you now have a it looks like you now have a bay that's entered from the front, whereas currently they're all entered from the side. Is that not a new bay?
No. No, not, I don't know if you're looking.
Not a front entry bay.
That's the service, service entrance?
Oh, yeah, that's the, yeah, that's actually where you pull in to meet your service advisor. So. So right, right now it's that same area, except that you're standing outside in the, the rain and the heat. So this door that you're seeing, you drive in climate controlled space, you work with your services advisor. And then the car's taken inside to the, um, to the repairment.
And what's the total expansion of your footprint?
Well, it's, um, we have the two areas, um, that are the, uh, so it's like 870 something for the, um, for the service bay expansion and about 1,100 for the, um, uh, the reconfigured and expanded, uh, sales and service area. So the.
Uh, Mr. Brower, the, the thing on the roof, is that expanded footprint as well?
No, well, that's the currently what's up there now. That's a, like a mezzanine, elevated mezzanine, a second story, if you will, existing. And it's now conference and storage. And as a result of the reconfiguration on the first floor, some of the, um, back office functions are going to get relocated to there, but that, that's existing.
I don't, I don't, it's, it's on the roof or below the roof?
It's partially, um, uh, but the roof of that space is higher than the main roof. But it's not.
I'm seeing it now here at a, uh, aerial view, but I, I, is the new space actually poking up like a full story above the new one?
It's the, it's the, no, it's the existing space that's there currently. So that shell does not change. The footprint does not change. It's internal to that only. So there's.
And it's still underneath it. Okay. Great. Thank you.
And, uh, so part of the, uh, the zoning challenge that we have here is that, uh, the, um, the zoning regulations have thrice, uh, impacted this, uh, operation, notwithstanding its 50 years of, uh, operation and being part of the community. Uh, so the, uh, when it was built, uh, it was fully in compliance. And you'll see it, the, uh, the footprint of the building when it was built, uh, took advantage of the provision of a 30-foot permitted extension of a less restrictive use into a more restrictive zone. So, uh, the commercial use was therefore allowed to count 30 feet of the adjoining R dash seven land.
Yep, we saw that in your submission.
Okay. So, so it was a bigger commercial zoned property than it was. That, uh, provision has subsequently been taken out. So, um, if you look, yes, so you see the building itself, the big square in the middle and the, um, the 30-foot touches that southeast corner. Um, if you look. Uh, yeah. So slide down to the corner of the building. Uh, yeah. So that's the 30-foot strip. And the line you could see there from the original LB zone is 30 feet in from that back corner. So, uh, that was perfectly legal back then to consider.
So now you're legally non-conforming and you've got the problem, which is that you're proposing to expand. Which of your site uses, um, are now legally non-conforming? You're okay on FAR. You're fine on FAR. I'm have, I'm reading sideways, but, um, you're non-conforming to building coverage?
Well, it depends on what the status of that 30 feet is. And that's a, uh, spoke with.
You can't expand the use of it is, would be, I think you're hearing us say, you have a legal non-conformity, but you can't expand that non-conformity.
Right. So all of the proposed work, um, is taking place in the currently zoned LB, um, property. So that 30-foot is, uh, to the left of down there where that service entrance is. So the, um, so that part of it, so it's again, I guess if we in turn numerically, if we have to be stuck with the, um, uh, LBR zoned land, if there's no residual credit for the, um.
You cannot expand into it. You still have that residual. I mean, you were fine when you did it. I mean, I think you know what I'm saying.
Right, exactly. So we're not, we're, we're not physically placing anything, uh, beyond the LB zone line. Um, square footage wise, um, we may, uh, have to address, uh, an FAR situation because we have less, less land now, but, um, we'll, we'll develop those numbers once we have.
Um, no, well, wait a second. On the FAR, you can look at your total site. I mean, you would have to do a blended use, right? A blended. You're saying you're going to blend the FARs of the two zones?
No, that, well, that's the question that, uh, we, we need confirmation.
Zones. So you have, you have the P zone in the back.
Right.
And you have the LB zone in the front.
Right.
Um, I'm just thinking out loud, wouldn't it make sense to mer- to rezone the P to an LB?
That would, uh, certainly make it, uh.
And merge your lots?
Yeah, that, or P zone now has also been eliminated. So.
Exactly. And hardly anybody here knows what that is, but we eliminated the P zone. So, um, um, you mer- so you merge your lots. They're all LB. What are your existing legal non-conformities? I think your lot coverage and your building coverage are legally non-conforming, but I, I'm not sure. I.
Yeah, I think that's the, the case. And again, it depends on, do we count the, um, uh, the, the, the 30-foot zone or not, if we're just back to existing LB. It's kind of weird because in effect, the, the property.
You can't, yeah, you were able to go that 30 feet into the less restrictive zone in the past.
Right.
You would not be able to expand that intrusion into the less restrictive zone and.
Yes, but that, that we're absolutely not. So then it's a question of what, what is our, uh, square footage that we get to use for our, our zoning statistics. Correct. Rezoning it to LB would obviously, um, make the most sense because P zones aren't even permitted. And this rear parking area is obviously an integral part of the operation. So.
I don't even know why you did the P and, uh, back then. That's an interesting question.
Because the P zone back then, we always used for inventory parking at dealerships.
I know.
And I think actually you've got to be careful about unintended consequences. If we eliminate this P zone.
No, we've eliminated the zone already.
Well, we've eliminated this zone, but it's still a zone. It's a zone on our books for this particular reason. Parking of inventory and cars.
It's gone. It doesn't exist on our books anymore. We took it out of the regulation.
It, it, it reverts back to the pre-76 establishment. So if it was commercial, it goes to LB. If it was residential, it goes back to the, the residential designation. So uh, ostensibly it's, it's a non-conforming parking lot in a residential zone and the building extends over. So, um, you know, there is, there is floor area that could be used. It would be blended. You take the, the two areas in each zone and you do your floor area and you combine them together. And that would be your net.
No unintended consequences here, Nick, is what we're saying, because that zone, we took it out of the regulations completely because we ran into this somewhere else on another car dealership, maybe eight years ago? I don't remember how long.
Yes, eight years. Yes. I remember distinctly.
So, all right. So we, so I think, um, yes, so we'll produce the, um, we're, we're definitely not crossing the current LB line with any improvement. Um, we will, uh, make the lighting landscaping, uh, conform, uh, and, uh, so then the key thing is we'll just, we'll do the blended square footage. That'll determine if in fact we are over or not. And, uh, I've already asked Mr. Laurel if we could meet with, uh, him and our new, uh, zoning officer, James Lonnie, to just get on the same page with that. So we can finalize our numbers.
And, and you've heard us. Um, uh, we have been very particular about intensifications, all right, expansion of non-conformities. We have, we're really very much reliant on case law for that at this point. Um, Mr. Stein, just so you know, when you talk about the landscaping, the whole neighborhood dislikes that green turf thing in the front, just so you know.
Is that now not part of the historic streetscape?
Everybody's always like, oh my gosh. Okay.
Mr. Mr. Brower, to, to be blunt, no, it's not part of the historic.
And also, and, and you heard us talking about it, uh, Mr. Brower heard us talking about it yesterday. We have neighbors, um, we have residents on the street behind you on Sachem Lane who are kept awake by your lighting of that piece of your parking in the back. And, um, have to have blackout shades da- down from the time you turn them on in the winter. So they get no natural light into it because it's so bright back there. It's the two houses. I would, I forget. It's eastern, the northeast end of Sachem Lane.
Are those lights on for security?
Yeah, they're to, they're to protect because it's their car inventory is back there. So it's for security, but they could do different kind of lighting that would allow them to have cameras now. I mean, these lights are old nowadays. They could do something. Okay. I want to use up the time. Anybody else got questions or comments for the applicant?
When do you want to send this to ARC?
Well, if that's what, Mr. Brower, here's my, our question. Once you know what you can do with the building and talking to Mr. Lenny and Mr. LaRoe, and you have a sense that if you're not going to be expanding your non-conformity and you're not going to go for a variance, then I would suggest you go to ARC immediately.
Right.
Because once you don't have a zoning issue, we can nail down the rest of it. You should be able to do, you've got lots of space to do your drainage. Patrick, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I, I would, I would suggest if the applicant can do the additions without doing, like you just mentioned, Madam Chair, a variance or a, um, text, a zoning map amendment, then, and then I prob- likely there won't be a lot to see that's different from this. Uh, uh, if anyone disagrees, I'm, I'm happy to hear it, but.
No, I, I think as long as, I was a little concerned about that area where you drive in because it looked like that expanded your building coverage significantly, where you drive in to do service drop-off. Um, and so that, that looked like a, a footprint change if you're already over your coverage numbers. Um,
I understand that it, that you want to know before we go to ARC, do we need a variance or not? And did we get the variance? So yes, we will get on that right away, finalize our numbers, get that answer and go one of two directions.
Right. And so you just, you figure out, and, um, we haven't been hearing people talk to us about getting variance when they're, they're just doing an expansion of a building that could be configured some other way. But if you have a hardship that you can lay out, that's, that's your job. Uh, there was something else. So we, it, it is great, uh, that, that you're going to facelift and that it's going to be, you know, modernized. That sounds exciting. Um, our experience in the past with all the dealerships has, have been that the mother houses tend to put significant pressure on their standards. Yeah, Andreas is nodding. Mr. Streiseman is nodding because there is significant pressure. Our most significant one was the Lexus application over on Old Track. And it was a huge facility because that was what Lexus is at the time, what they wanted to do. That was the model they had. And you know, then the corporation involves its model. Um, I don't have anything else on that. Uh, we'll help you push back on the mothership if you want. Um, anybody else?
Oh, public comment, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application at Toyota? Mr. Walsh? Um, welcome back. All right, go ahead.
Okay, I, I'm back. I'm back and hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I, I just wanted to push back, uh, uh, two things. One on the lights. I, I feel the lights are still intrusive. I, I was talking to neighbors the other night on both Cross and Sachem.
Oh, yeah, they're intrusive on Cross. I forgot about that.
Um, a- a- and also Salem. Um, so it's those three streets. If you're to walk those streets um, at night, especially in the winter, you'll notice that the, the lighting intrudes onto the upper floors of the homes. Um, a- a- and so it's, if something could be done to maybe prohibit the light trespass, um, you know, with this project here, I think that would be much appreciated uh, by the neighbors. And then, um, I, I, I know another neighbor was talking about the, uh, like speaker intercom system. Um, a- a- and I don't know if, if there's any way to focus that so that sound does not bleed into, that was specifically a cross lane issue. But so that sound doesn't bleed into the backyards of those on cross lane, um, y- you know, all a- a- all day long. You, you know, it wasn't an issue, he said, at night. So I, I don't think it's outside of the sound ordinance rules of the town, but just kind of, kind of an annoyance and irritation. Just wanted to bring that to the, uh, the attention of you guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Um, and Mr. Stein, um, it, it'll be huge for how the neighborhood perceives you. Um, when you go forward with those, you know, when you, when you're going forward with those changes, because it'll be so positive in COSCOM um, for people.
Yeah, he, uh, when that whole lighting thing came up, um, before, uh, again, who you talk to depends what kind of answer you get. And I don't know what inspector it may have been, but, um, at the time, uh, Clint was advised that he couldn't move the light poles closer to the neighbors, uh, even if they were going to be aimed away from the neighbors. So that was based, that's, that's where they became.
Not sure this was in your time period, Mr. Stein, because I think this, I've been hearing from the neighbors for 20 years.
Well, Clint, how long?
So I don't know, sir. You've been there a while. Okay.
Okay, so it's not, it's not him or his father. It's, it's the only two.
Okay, all right. So.
I, I've been there. I've been there for 45 years. And I, I didn't know we, we're still having an issue. I apologize. I'd love to continue to have a great relationship in the neighborhood. So we're welcoming whatever it takes to figure it out.
Wonderful.
It'll get fixed.
Well, Mr. Streiseman knows a lot about our lighting regs, so he will be able to really help you because he was a big part of the new regulations. So he will be able to make sure that we get something that's not intrusive, but keeps your inventory safe. And with that, I've been told to stop talking. I've been told, I was told to stop talking, so I'm, I'm standing down.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we'll see you soon.
Okay, thank you.
So you go to ARC if you don't, if you don't have a big problem with a footprint.
Right.
Go to ARC.
Got you. We'll, we'll be in touch with Mr. LaRoe. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right.
And with that.
And with that, our, our next step is okidoki. No, not yet. As to okay, first of all, who's seated on 100 East Putt? Do people remember? There is, there's.
These are regulars, right?
It is.
Okay, so regulars are seated on 100 East Putt, 100 East Putnam LLC application for a final coastal site plan and special permit to change a non-conforming use to another, uh, non-conforming use with no proposed site work or changes to this, to the, to the approved building on 33,000 square foot property at 100 East Putnam Avenue in the COSCOM LBR2 coastal overlay and post-road impact overlay zones. The subject property has approvals for and is under construction as a mixed-use moderate income housing development of three stories with 22 units, where five of the units would be moderate income units as described in section 6110 of the Greenwich Building Zone Regulations. There is also 3,861 square feet of commercial space. Parking of, is, parking is available for 46 vehicles plus four ADA spaces. As a mixed-use development, the apartments require one parking space per unit. The commercial space square footage required 22 spaces according to the zoning regulations. First floor banks are not a permitted use in the LBR2 zone. However, the site previously had a bank and the commission approved the development plan with the bank, continuing its legally non-conforming use status. The applicant now proposes to replace the bank with a medical spa as defined in section 65 of the BZR. Medical spas fall under use group four, which is also not allowed in the LBR2 zone. The applicant is thus seeking to change the pre-existing non-conforming use to another lesser or equal non-conforming use as described in section 6141 of the BZR. The layout now proposed would increase the western tenant space by 500 square feet to 2,638 square feet. Section 6158 requires one parking space per 150 square feet of usable office or retail space. This equates to 13 parking spaces for the western tenant. The eastern retail space would be commensurally reduced to 1,798 square feet and would require nine parking spaces. The applicant describes the services to be provided as follows. Seven therapy rooms, cryotherapy, light therapy, sauna, float room, compression therapy, three IV stations. Expected staff is two employees, including a nurse. Expected staff is two employees, including a nurse, who will be on site for no more than six hours per day. All treatments would be by appointment and there would be a minimum of twenty minutes between appointments. The applicant has offered to limit customers to more, no more than ten onsite at any time. Based on the operational plan proposed to the com, proposed, the commission finds this application appears to correspond. More closely to a personal than to a medical spa. Under section six one fifty-eight of the BZR, personal service establishments such as nail salons. Must have two parking spaces per chair, whereas one space per exercise station is required for other personal services. The commission finds that neither of these parking requirements seems appropriate for the operations entailed in this application. This proposed use has a mix of medical and non-medical services. With one customer being attended at a time and a time gap between customers. The commission finds that one parking space per customer accommodation is more fitting. And that the parking spaces to be available onsite are sufficient for the proposed use. The commission further finds the proposed medical spa to be no more non-conforming than the previous bank use. As proposed, the facility would have five window door openings facing the street. Three of those would display merchandise and would provide privacy to spike and would provide privacy to spa clients. The remaining two will allow full internal viewing from the street. On October tenth, the CEO advised he had no issues with the applications. On October ninth, Sue advised it had no comments, but requested a signed letter of applicant acknowledgement. This letter was provided on October fifteen, twenty twenty-four. Therefore, the subject applications are hereby approved as a change of use from a non-conforming bank. To a non-conforming medical spa with the following conditions. Applicant to limit the site to eleven customers at one time and to keep a mi, mi, twenty minutes separate. A minimum twenty minutes separation between appointments. Windows shall not be blocked or covered and must rotate merchandise displays or provide full visibility to the interior. All relevant health permits shall be obtained and staff comments addressed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Low. Mr. Low, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Yaski?
Aye.
Albin is also ayeing with that. The motion passes five, nothing. And I will send it to you, Patrick. I sent you an earlier draft, but I have some, it's anything else? Oh, quickly.
Two, uh, two items, Madam Chair, but go with the first one you're going to talk about.
The first one we were going to talk about was. Um, we now have three very large applications, really, really large applications that you're all familiar with. That would be on the November thirteenth meeting. Oh, you do spreadsheets, isn't this cool? We think that this will make it too long. And that therefore we need to add a second meeting at that time. Um, I've told Pat to go ahead. On, and he's going to do the twelfth or the fourteenth, Patrick.
Um. I, I guess it's, it's really up to the commission. If we, i- it's, well, just to summarize a little more, it is for the, the rink. And the rink is a must close, uh, by the fourteenth with no opportunity to extend. Um, I've been promised I will get materials this tomorrow or the next day for review. Which is enough time for us to review it, but, um, if the commission wants to shorten this next meeting with, um. Applications such as American Lane and, um, the Mason Street, um.
So we've got, it was got, so on this meeting, besides the normal cast, we have, we have the rink. We have Mason Street eight thirty G and we have Greenwich American can. Um, I don't think the other ones are hugely time consuming, so the idea would be to move one of them. To a different, to, to a different night. I'm tempted to move the rink.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and the rink would, it would, with the timing, we could do it on Tuesday. Uh, or we could do it on Thursday, the fourteenth. So it'd be the twelfth or the fourteenth, but that's, those are the only options right now with the timing. Because of notification requirements.
And this is only for the preliminary side plan, folks. The MI will just extend ourselves. That doesn't have a must close on it. Um, we need to check when. We extended it ninety days at one point. We just need to double check where we are with that. Okay, Patrick, over to you. I think you've got support.
Okay, so I, I, I guess, uh, the, the twelfth, is there an objection the twelfth or the fourteenth or?
No, as long as you're in, it's not.
I prefer the twelfth. It's could be an evening meeting, right? Starting at four.
I, I would, I would start it at the same time if anyone has any other thoughts that I don't, I don't.
We'll start it right after the briefing.
Right, I, I cannot attend the twelfth, but I don't know if I'm on, I mean.
Okay.
Um, nah, yeah, you, well, you would check link, you were, yes, um, we'll just make you up next then. You're, well, one of you, you, we'll put you on the other night.
Okay.
Well, I'll figure it out.
So we will, we will plan for a meeting on the twelfth and, and thank you for everyone who got ten. I just have, uh, one other issue. Uh, related to something we should have talked about, the briefing. It's a discussion item, um.
Uh, make a motion that we add an item to the agenda or not?
Uh, no, it's just discussion. What I, I'm not asking for a vote in this direction here. It is a, uh, open space application. That, um, and now of course, opening that locked me out of this. Where am I here? Okay. Uh, this is a property at Ford Lane. Uh, it's a peculiar little open space parcel. Um, that, um. The commission approved as part of a subdivision, um, this area right here. And, uh, the adjacent lot to the, well, I think it's the south, but it's to the left here. Um, it, it's one of these front yard open space deals. They're looking to plant this in a way that's a little more, um.
Manicured?
Manicure, well, uh, we got this out of, uh, a huge battle, um, with Katie. Uh, before, um, Katie dealt with this herself, I believe, at one point. I just don't see the commission have, having talked about it, and I just wanted to check in with you. The open space agreement doesn't say explicitly that changes in here need to come back to the commission. It just says that it needs to be reviewed with planning and zoning and conservation. So, um, if, if the, and by the way, these trees. Um, are here right now, so it's the other plantings that are, are going to be the consideration. So. If the commission, uh, is so inclined, uh, staff would be happy to take this on and, and work with the applicant. Otherwise, it'll have to come back to us at a meeting, so.
Comments?
Well, this is coming out of the blue, uh, but.
Yeah, sorry, I, I, sorry to call.
But, uh, uh, what you're asking is there existing trees in there and they want to add ground cover?
Yes, they want to, they want to supplement what's there now.
Yeah, is this to provide extra screening? What's the purpose of it?
Well, it, it, what, what, a- actually what happened, Mr. Low, back, uh, probably fifteen years ago, is this was just kept as lawn. And when the applications came in for redevelopment, it was caught by staff that this was not. You know, to per plan and that they needed to come up with some landscaping plan. So we handled it under the, uh, coastal application. Um, but it was an open space parcel, so again.
So it's supposed to be natural, right?
No, that, it, it gets an older one, so the language in there is not the way that we write it now. It, it was. It was meant to be undeveloped, but not.
I, I would trust, I would trust the staff to handle this. That's my view.
Understood. If anyone doesn't disagree, I'm happy to do that, so.
Works for me.
Alright, we're good.
Alright, and with that, I don't, I, I don't need your attention anymore, so.
Okay, um, and just quickly, there'll be pizza at one o'clock in the afternoon.
I know why we're whispering. I think we should be screaming pizza. What, what are you, what are you saying? Nobody.
We're going to have pizza on Friday at one o'clock.
Oh, great.
In the cone room, cone room.
Are you going to be making it?
No, but you know the, you know the company that's serving. Cause they've been an applicant.
What kind of pizza?
Pizza. Um, I'll send you, we're picking right now, so I'll send you.
I'm not interested, just kidding.
Oh, okay, alright.
Pepperoni's always good.
Okay.
If I was to call, I'd have a slice of pepperoni.
If I was to come in, don't forget eleven thirty on Friday for tree planting. So far, I've only heard Mary can't make it.
Okay. And good night.
Okay, good night.
We'll get out of here.
The door to the left, I think, right?